At this time, we are in the appropriation of the executive branch. On section fifteen. Any questions by members?
Section fifteen or section fourteen? Fourteen.
I'm showing section, just a second, we're saying, Bill, page fifteen. We are in appropriation for the executive branch. Looking at section fourteen is off the Attorney General. We're working from the right, Bill. All right, go ahead, on the appropriation of the executive branch, section fourteen. Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I guess the first question I have is just the totals in the appropriation. In part one, chapter four, part one, executive legislative judicial branch of public law seventeen or twenty-eight, one fifty, when I look at that appropriation, the section one there, which is the appropriation for the executive branch, and I add it up, I add the twenty-six million, two-four-one, one-two-nine from the general fund, I guess, but I just added the total appropriation, then I add the five-seven-four, six-eight-three, the eighteen million, one-three-zero, and then the two-three-seven, four-oh-five. And I look at the appropriation in Bill seventy-four for the executive branch, and the appropriation is at sixty-one million total, or sixty-six million, one-three-six-eight-four-six. What are the difference between the two? It shows an increase in Bill seventy-four's appropriation. Is that correct?
Based on just the numbers, if you compare the Bill one-fifty, I mean, public law twenty, twenty-eight, one-fifty to the revised before you.
Yeah, so it's about a, the way I read is almost a twelve million dollar difference, if I add it correctly, I may have not added the twenty-two-three-seven, but I think I did. So, there's almost a twelve to fourteen million dollar difference in the new appropriation in the budget that is supposed to be a savings. So, can we just try to? It just doesn't seem to kind of make sense. That in a budget where we're trying to reduce operating costs, we're appropriating an additional twelve million to the executive branch versus the total appropriation to the executive branch in twenty-eight, one-fifty?
Yeah, I think where the difference is, Senator, is in the amounts that are being appropriated and outlined in sections A through...
Yeah, in A through Y, those are the special funds, though. They're not the general fund appropriations.
In the old, in the old, in the current budget, yes, the special funds were identified, I believe.
Right.
The general fund amounts were not.
Yes, I understand. But it's still, those general fund appropriations are part of the total numbers in section one, and the subsections A through Y are also part of that. So, what we did was, in the public law twenty-eight, one-fifty, we did not show the general fund allocation for the departments and agencies of A through Y, and in the new bill, we are showing them, is, I think, the way that the bill's structured, if I kind of read it correctly.
Senator, if I can, if I can just talk about how we approached this section of the bill particularly.
Okay.
What we did was, first, we eliminated what was the original carryover appropriation, and then what we reflected in the appropriations for each of the agencies was what their operating costs were currently, and in some of those areas, there wasn't a true reflection of the operating costs, and then after... Well, that's not fair. It's not that there weren't true reflections of it, but the amount in the total of the appropriation that was provided for all of it didn't reflect what the true operating costs were if you divided it out into all the agencies. But, and so, it was after that when we did the line item appropriations that we then took the reduction of two-point-five percent from each of the agencies. So, what is in Bill seventy-four is a reflection of what the current operating costs were.
So, we increased our operating costs by twelve million dollars?
We simply reflected what was the true operating cost at that point.
I know, but the way I, I wasn't here also for twenty-eight, one-fifty, but if I read it correctly, the budget for twenty-eight, one-fifty did not reflect the true resources. In other words, there's twenty-five million in lapse funds that's going to be a part of the total to be expended, and so, that's not, it's just not there. It's not real money. There was an eight million dollar appropriated from the savings of a refinancing of a bond that's just not there because of the refinancing didn't happen. But, so you're telling me that those issues are separate issues from what was to be broken down and to be used by the different departments and agencies? And that since that time to today, we've seen a twelve million dollar growth in the operating requirements or the true operating costs of this?
Yeah, we haven't seen a growth in the operating requirements. What we reflected in Bill seventy-four was the true operating levels at this time. And with the carryover appropriations, obviously, had more revenues been coming in, we would have been able to make it through with the carryovers. But because the revenues have been revised downward, then the lapses aren't available as a funding source. They're not separate issues. What we had to do was, in order to find the balance between the appropriation and the revenues, was tie the revenues directly to an appropriation to each agency. And so, as we went through the analysis on the operating levels for the agencies, this, what this reflects is what the current operating costs are.
Yeah, I guess that the reason why I'm asking that is because if I look at this budget, you're telling me that last year, for example, let's just take the Department of Administration, the first line item there. In the last budget, the Department of Administration's funding was identified of two-point-five million form highway funds. It says Guam Highway Fund, two-point-five million to the Department of Administration, and then it did not allocate a general fund appropriation level to that. This bill, Bill seventy-four, you're saying that seven-point-nine million, nine-four-five of the appropriation in section one will be allocated to the Department of Administration. That, I understand that. My question is, what was the assumed, or, yeah, I guess, what was the assumed appropriation level from the general fund back in October of two thousand and six?
I believe it was the Governor's, in the Governor's transmittal of the...
In the budget?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. And if I have that?
And it was, it was actually, the amounts were, because of the way in which that budget was written, we have, we can show the breakdown, how that five-point-seven was allocated plus all the other types of authorizations to fund us from the general fund side. So, we took the level that was loaded in our, as an appropriation level, and then we reduced it by that two-and-a-half percent, which gave us, for example, four D O eight, seven million, nine forty-five, seven forty-two.
And that's a two percent, is that the two-point-five?
Yes.
Two-and-a-half percent reduction?
Based on the amounts that were loaded early in the fiscal year that were given for us to operate, authorized for us to operate on.
Okay, and so, when we did all that, when we did all that, we're at twelve million dollars above what those were loaded, basically, at the beginning of two thousand and October first? No? Because the total appropriation is, appears to be twelve to fourteen million more?
No, if, when I look at the system and pulled out all of the appropriation levels that were loaded for these agencies that are identified, yeah, the total was forty-five million, six-thirty-six, four-hundred, so, you know, we took the two-and-a-half percent, and so, that's how we came up with the forty-four million, four-ninety-five, four-ninety from the general fund side.
Okay.
That's in the bill before you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. If, after everybody, and if I further review, I'd like to maybe, I just ask some more questions.
Thank you. Senator Rispio, and then Senator Calvo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, I also shared the same concerns as the previous speaker, and a lot of the things that kind of lead us to asking the questions we ask is because of the presentation that we're getting. When the original bill was submitted, and I don't want to repeat what Speaker Pangolino has just said, but the original bill versus this bill before us for informational purposes only really clarifies what the administration is attempting to do in section fourteen. The total appropriation to the executive branch is sixty-six million, one-hundred-thirty-six-thousand, eight-hundred-forty-six dollars, but only forty-five-point-six million of that amount is coming from the general fund. However, there's about thirty-three million dollars worth of appropriations, twenty-five million from lapses, which there was never any cash to back it up, and eight million dollars that were supposed to be realized from the proceeds of the refinancing of a bond. But, so when you take the forty-five-point-six appropriation, general fund side only, and see what the administration is proposing to fund all these line agencies for their actual cash requirements, it's about forty-four-point-four million. So, there's still a two-and-a-half percent reduction for all these twenty-five departments and agencies, which come out to about one-point-one million dollars. So, there is a two-and-a-half percent cut, and then that's how we should approach this particular section. Mr. Chairman is asking these agencies whether or not they can sustain the two-and-a-half percent cut. But I wanted to also point it out, and maybe the panel can follow the discussion, because the thirty-three million dollars worth of appropriations didn't have any cash to back it up, the administration, the governor's also proposing that those items be repealed. So, when you repeal the thirty-three million dollars worth of appropriations, you have to substantiate that somehow with the cash requirements that these agencies need for the remaining six months. So, this is where our spending authority now goes back up to four-hundred-and-seventy-eight million dollars. Our adopted revenue projection here in the Committee of the Hole is four-hundred-and-fifty-three-point-seven million dollars. Mr. Chairman, we still have a cash shortfall of twenty-four-point-three million dollars, and that's the gap that we have to try to fill for the next six months. This is taking into consideration already the savings that would be realized from the Governor's executive order and other measures. That's why the spending authority went down from, if you recall, the presentation that they provided in their PowerPoint was about four-hundred-and-ninety-four million. That's why it went down to four-hundred-and-seventy-eight. But although the adopted revenue for fiscal year two thousand and seven was four-hundred-and-fifty-six million, when the legislature authorized those carryovers, that brought the spending authority correspondingly up. Am I correct, Director?
That's how we explain that authorization level, because of the carryover allowed, authorized certain activities to continue.
So, just so we can follow, of the sixty-six-point-one million dollars appropriation to the executive branch, only forty-five-point-six million dollars are general fund. This is for section fourteen, so we can begin to talk about all the...
That's correct, forty, yeah.
Forty-five-point-six, and so, the, what the governor's proposing for all the twenty-five line agencies is forty-four-point-four million dollars. There's a decrease of one-point-one million.
That's, that's correct.
Which is a two-and-a-half percent reduction. But you understand, though, right, Director Perez, that when the bill was first submitted, when you dissect the way the bill was first introduced, or as the bill as introduced, how you could see it jump from twenty-some million to sixty-some million, how you could wonder, how could there be a hundred? I believe it was a hundred-and-fifty-eight percent increase at the time you're asking all the other branches of government and the departments and agencies to take a two-and-a-half percent cut. So, it was just, yeah, so now, we're clear that there's a two-and-a-half percent cut, a reduction of one-point-one, and now, we can begin to ask, beginning with your department, what this two-and-a-half percent cut will do for your agency. So, can I begin the first question then, Mr. Chairman, by asking Department of Administration how they intend to sustain a two-and-a-half percent cut? And let's, for Department of Administration, have you figured out how you would be able to absorb a two-and-a-half percent cut to your agency?
Yes, Senator Rispio. We have a number of vacancies that, of course, we will not fill. We can generate savings from that.
Sir, what is your, what is your appropriation in two thousand, for the two thousand and seven budget, and what is your revised appropriation level?
Okay, let me pull that. The difference is a, I believe it's a two-hundred-and-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-four-thousand rounded-off reduction.
Because we don't have that breakdown of all the different twenty-five agencies, so, two-hundred-five-thousand dollars. I'm sorry to ask the question again, have you figured out amongst yourselves how you would be able to sustain that two-hundred-five-thousand-dollar reduction?
Primarily, we won't fill any vacancies. We have had a number of vacancies just early this year, and so, those will not be filled. We are also looking at consolidating maybe some of our contracts or our copier services, because, you know, as it is, they're like in every single division, so, we're working to reduce those costs. We feel that we will be able to, to generate that savings that's proposed by the end of the year.
Does it just miraculously even out, the vacancies and the, does it even out where it's two-hundred-five-thousand dollars worth of?
No, no, it...
Is it more?
No, it's actually, based on our initial analysis and looking at the two-hundred-and-three, right now, we will be able to meet that goal if we institute a couple of other things, which is, for example, like I said, consolidating the contracts, or, you know, just reducing overall other, you know, the Department of Administration outside of salaries, just like with every agency, the bulk of our requirements are in salaries. We do have a number of contracts which are, they're capped for another, for example, our health insurance contract. We have, it's a annual contract, and it's capped at a hundred-and-sixty thousand. We can try to save on that. In other words, it depends on actual hours of services that we do engage our chief negotiator and our actuary, so there's potential additional savings there.
I keep saying over and over that you must have the most difficult job right now in the government of Guam, because you're the agency that actually cuts the check. And part of that responsibility is the revenue tracking. And I was taking a look at the document that I have from October two thousand and five to September two thousand and seven actuals, and then October two thousand and six to two thousand, to December two thousand and six actuals, and it appears that for fiscal year two thousand and six, the number that I'm seeing is four-hundred-and-ten million dollars as the total revenue collected for that particular fiscal year. Just recently, it was about four-hundred-and-eighteen million dollars. Can you speak to why there was a revision of eight million dollars downward? And this has a lot to do with the information that we need in preparation of the revised budget for fiscal year two thousand and seven.
Yeah, I think, you're looking at two thousand and six or two thousand and five, Senator Rispio?
Two thousand and six, I have up to December two thousand and six actuals.
Okay, but you're looking at nine-thirty, right?
This is as of March twenty-first, two thousand and seven. For general fund total, two oh-six, bottom line, four-hundred-and-ten-point-three million dollars. And very recently, ma'am, it was four-hundred-and-eighteen million. So, now, you're saying, based on this report, that we were twenty-six million dollars off for fiscal year two thousand and six?
Remember, those monthly statements or interim reports and their draft statements, they are all subject to audits, and then it's, it's not unusual at the end of the year that there are audit adjustments, either because of a misclassification of revenues or some other accounting principle that comes into play. So, the difference there you see between our draft, our original draft number, I think, of four-ten, and then it went up to about four-seventeen, is because of what is called the additional child's tax credit. It's similar to a, it's like a hundred percent federal reimbursement program. If we pay out refunds that include that credit that is allowed, the government of Guam, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, basically draws down a request for reimbursement. So, it's similar to a hundred percent federally funded program.
But your additional child tax credit received, you're booking that for oh-seven, three-point-seven million, then you have a balance of projected A C T C of four-point-two. That's, I believe, how you got to the four-hundred-and-thirty-four million dollar figure that you're tracking right now as a revenue base, right?
That's right, yeah, it was kind of separated out, because it's only really a function of when we get it.
But what you just told me was booked for the current fiscal year, was it also adjusted for fiscal year two thousand and six? This particular category, I mean, is it possible to have an eight million dollar variance?
Yeah, and for, that's why I'm saying, what year, what year are you really looking at? If you're looking at nine-thirty oh-six...
I'm looking at the document that says D O A files, March twenty-first, two thousand and seven. This is your most current?
That's right, but in two thousand and six, you know, I really need to look at what you're looking at. I don't think I have that particular date of that report, but the, the way the additional child's tax credit is being treated is different from the way it was treated in the past.
This document I have, it shows, it says, October two thousand and five to September two thousand and six actuals, and then October two thousand and six to December two thousand and seven, sorry, two thousand and six actuals, and then January two thousand and seven to February two thousand and seven draft, and then a projection from March two thousand and seven through September two thousand and seven projection. So, your final revenue collection, based on this report, for fiscal year two thousand and six is four-hundred-and-ten million. That's what, that's what I'm showing, and I shared this with Chairman Calvo earlier.
I guess, and that's what I was trying to explain, that after the auditors looked at that, they realized that the additional child tax credit, that was the adjustment.
So, what is the final revenue?
Well, it's not yet, I mean, we still have a...
Absent the audit, what is, what is the most latest?
It's, I believe, about four-seventeen for oh-six.
For what?
Four-hundred-and-seventeen million for two thousand and six.
That's as of when?
After we, I think we issued our report in December, we were not going to change it until the audit comes down.
But this document is as of March twenty-first, two thousand and seven. Maybe we can explore this further?
Yeah, I can come back and look at what you're...
Okay, I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
That's a point of inquiry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispio.
We have requested last Saturday from all the department and agencies, by the way, a listing of their vacancies and the amount. So, if we can make sure that all the directors, when they make their presentations, to provide each member of the legislature a copy of their vacancies presently, and the actual amount that is budgeted.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Senior Senator Pinkley. Again, this request has been made by the body, Ms. Perez and members of the administration. If we can please receive those, the listing of those vacancies, positions?
Sure, I've got mine, so...
Run copies, okay? And we'll get copies made to the members of the body.
Just the positions? Yeah, this is due.
We were at Senator Rispio, Senator Rispio, that concludes your, and then it was just a point of information by the senior senator, Senator Barnes.
Tina Rose Munia Barnes, thank you, Vice Speaker, Mr. Chair.
Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, it's only been the first session, I'm going to straighten it.
That's okay, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to speak this morning, and to our panel members up there, thank you very much. It's good to see the Department of Administration here. Johnny, thank you, Joey, appreciate your time. And, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm just trying to follow everything that has happened within the last couple of weeks, so if I may, I'm just going to try and go through a process here so I can get a better understanding, and hopefully, some answers from the Department of Administration and the folks that are here with us, so, thank you again. Last week, when the administration representatives came to present their PowerPoint presentation on how to deal with the current financial crisis, you, Mr. Chair, Vice Speaker, you questioned Mr. Carlos Berdallio, the director of B B M R, about the allotment request that B B M R has approved as of, and we did that presentation, and that was based on the AS four-hundred as of March thirteen, two thousand and seven, and I know you remember that, right? And unless I was wrong or mistaken, the halfway point of the fiscal year is March thirty-first, right, which was just Saturday, Sunday of this past week, right? So, these approvals were made eighteen days before we reached the halfway mark in the fiscal year. And as I reviewed the report that you, the good chairman, prepared, I was really, really surprised, more or less, not surprised, I was shocked, to hear that the director of B B M R admit that before we reached that end of the half, the first half of the fiscal year, we had approved fifty-nine departmental allotment requests at fifty percent or greater for the entire fiscal year appropriations. And of these fifty-nine, twelve had already received approvals of their entire appropriation, that is, one-hundred percent of their total appropriation for the entire year. And seven departmental allotment requests, including the governor's office, had received B B M R approval of more than eighty percent of their annual appropriations. And then, out of this report, another seven departments, including D O A, the director's office, had more than a seventy percent of their annual appropriation approved before we reached that halfway point in this fiscal year. And then, again, I'm working at further, eight departments, including the government house, received allotments approved of sixty percent or more. And then sixteen departments, including B B M R, had approvals of more than fifty percent. Nine departments had exactly fifty percent approved two weeks before the halfway point in this fiscal year. And I was really, really disappointed at that time to hear that the director, which was Carlos, admit that the Guam Public School System had only received thirty-nine percent of their allotment requests approved. And when I had asked at that meeting if they would receive the full allotment by the due date, they said yes, and when I was talking to some of the G P S S officials, they said, again, the full allotments as promised were not there. As I go further, the Guam Community College, G C C, received an approval of forty percent of their budget, and I understand, you know, education, safety, and our welfare is the most important thing that we're going to take a priority with, even more so that U L G only got... Even more so that UOG only got twenty-seven percent of their operations as of March thirteenth. I did again ask Mr. Berdallio how and why he would approve any allotment request from any department in excess of the fifty percent since we, at that time, did not reach the halfway point. And his response that his allotment approval is different from the actual amount of cash released by DOA. And again, when I, because of that answer, I did last week address a letter to the Director of Administration, Ms. Liu, asking to provide me with a report on exactly how much cash she has released to all the departments pursuant to the BBMR's allotment request approval. And to date, I still haven't received a courtesy copy or a response or an acknowledgement to my request. So I do intend to continue to ask that question, Ms. Liu, about the cash release situation today. And let me explain why I'm asking this. Is the reason why I want to know how much cash has been released is because this bill, in this bill submitted before, it proposes to reduce the appropriations of all the departments except the governor's office and the Department of Military Affairs, an average of two point five for the remainder of the fiscal year, which somehow translates to five percent decrease for the entire year. And if, for instance, DOA has already released the eighty-three percent requested by the governor's office and approved by BBMR, how is the governor's office going to operate over the next half of the fiscal year? And I also want to know how the same, as it relates to each of the other fifty-nine agencies or departments who had BBMR approval for more than half of their appropriations when we just reached that halfway mark this fiscal year. And, you know, that halfway mark was, again, Saturday, Sunday. And as I go further, Mr. Chair, it just kind of puzzles me only because, based on looking at the appropriations, some of the allotment releases a total of a hundred percent. I see that when we go through further with the budget, the, some agencies have already received that a hundred percent allotment. How are we gonna ask for it back? So that's my concern, and I'm hoping to get an answer as it relates, as an update, to what was presented to us on, if I'm not mistaken, it was March thirteenth. Thank you.
Senator Barnes, first of all, I apologize. I did not complete the letter until yesterday, and it was delivered, I asked my staff to deliver the response this morning. So it might be in your office where I actually did the percentages and everything that you asked?
I appreciate that, it'd give me a better understanding of how this presentation is being laid before me today because it's really, really crucial. Again, just wanting to understand, how are we gonna continue to operate when we've already released more than fifty percent?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the percentage that is attributable to the Department of Administration in total. DOA gets several different types of appropriations. One is just a straight operations appropriation, then there's COLA, there's residential. There's a number of, for example, see, I don't have it broken down, but COLA is one large one. So if you see that allotment was in excess of that sixty percent, it was because in order for us to pay that seven million in the beginning of the year, we needed that money to be loaded. So it's a little misleading sometimes when you just look at percentages. Because the COLA was a one lump sum, it was eleven hundred across for everyone that qualified. So we had to load that early in the year. So that kind of, I guess, so if you see the lump sum for DOA, if you looked at it as a percentage allotted over appropriated, yes, you are correct, it was over sixty percent. But if you just zero in on our operations, the spreadsheet I gave you gave you different percentages. One was allotment over the appropriation, the actual expenditure against that allotment or the expenditure against the appropriation level. So I think that will then kind of give you a better idea as to. I did it as of February twenty-eighth because we haven't yet closed March thirty-first. And if I give you a report of March, it really won't be complete. So I just went in because at the time when we had the roundtable meeting, I believe we were using the February twenty-eighth month-end cumulative allotments and expenditures and encumbrances. So these are at your office, and I'll be happy to answer anything specific as you look through it.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I don't have that information in front of me. Again, and to you, thank you very much, I really appreciate that. And as I go further, when I have the report in front of me, Mr. Chair, if I may, before the end, I will go ahead and then present any questions if I have any more to clarify what was provided to me. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Anyone else on Department Administration, subsection A, on section fourteen? Nobody else? That being said, I guess we can, we'll go to the next department. If no one else would like any questions addressed to the Department of Administration, we'll take just a one-minute recess to bring in the Department of Revenue and Taxation. One minute, one minute recess.
Committee of the whole is called to order. Let me just reiterate to the agencies that are pretty much on deck, ready to come to address the body, that the body had requested on Saturday to make sure that the, all the vacant positions are on paper as well as the allotment release from BBMR, as well as the actual cash received from those allotments. Okay, so the three things that were requested by the body, and it seems to be a frequent question asked, is the vacant positions, the actual allotment released by BBMR, and the actual cash received from those allotments, okay? That being said, we've got Reverend Tax here, Senator Shimizu, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, let me just, the Director of Revenue and Taxation for being with us for the past almost two weeks and carrying a lot of the responsibility of representing the administration in a lot of the questions asked, especially on the revenue side. So I want to commend you very much. In fact, I almost want to reward you with an increase or status quo of your budget, I really do. I absolutely feel that way, you know, because I am very familiar with the Physical Policy Committee as it was created. In fact, it was created during my first ten years Chief of Staff to Governor Budazoo. And also, just for an historical background, I was with Revenue and Taxation as your deputy way back when with your Director Manuel Chaco. So most of the folks that are there at that time are still there, and some of them are retiring, and a lot of them are retiring. And with that, they're taking a lot of corporate knowledge. You know, just on the income tax side, not talking about the regulatory side of the department, just on the income tax side, the continued changes simply because we enforce or we do the mirror provision of the Internal Revenue Code. Whatever changes that's made by the US Congress relative to that, it impacts us, and we always have to keep ourselves updated, updated on that scale. So I just want to salute you and your staff for being here all the time and giving us that information. It is my understanding that the governor's gonna cut your budget by two hundred and eight thousand dollars. This is a cut that's coming from the governor, not necessarily from the legislature. We're here to entertain. But one thing that I wanted to note, Mr. Chair, is that while all the agencies in Governor Guam, the great majority of them are users of funds. They do have some revenue streams coming in, but the great bulk of the revenue streams comes from Revenue and Taxation. This is the agency that goes out and fish for the revenues that we need. We need to give them more fishermen and women to go out. We need to give them the tools for taxpayer assistance. We need to give them the tools for revenue officers to go out and collect. We need to give them the tools for the tax auditors. And yes, we need to give them the tools for the intelligence officer to keep people honest. Tax is just based on voluntary compliance. And if they see that the Department of Revenue and Taxation is only wearing dentures and have no real teeth, they're going to do whatever they can to say, well, you know, hopefully, they don't have enough manpower, and they will never assess the tax, and it'll be, what, three years? And after three years, I'm scot-free. Adios, I can go in and start holding back because maybe they don't have enough people to process my returns, they don't have enough people to audit me. There's not enough people there to even come and investigate me. But we need to be able to increase voluntary compliance by fortifying the one agency that collects for the government of Guam, and that's Revenue and Taxation. We talk about cuts. We sent out six thousand letters to create a tremendous amount of anxiety among our people. What would that cost us, again, and people worrying? You know, I've always contend that the high level of stress really contributes to the amount of our fiscal well-being. And the answer lies with Artie Lagan and his department. That's where the revenue enhancement can come from. Now, I may be ruled out of order here, but I am not, I will go with the rules of engagement. And I do want to pontificate on that, but at a very appropriate time when our good chair allows us to come back and reconsider. I really want to reconsider those three things in health, public safety, education. But the revenue enhancement has to come from Revenue and Tax. And I look to my colleagues that when that time comes, we really need to fortify, allow them to hire retired revenue agents, allow them to hire retired revenue officers, allow them to hire taxpayer assistants. And if they say they're double dipping, this I say, they may be double dipping, but they may double our revenues. We need revenues. All, just very quickly, how many returns you have right now that are already set aside for audit?
Can I make Paul Pablo and Jorius answer that? Paul Pablo is the Tax Enforcement Administrator, he oversees the Audit Division.
In fact, maybe that would be good for the record, you might introduce the cadre of revenuers.
Okay, to my far right is Paul Pablo, he's the Tax Enforcement Administrator. To his left and to my right is Jorius, he's the Deputy Tax Commissioner. John Camacho, my Deputy Director. Edmund Villanueva, he's my Chief of Administration. To my far left is Frank Blas, he's overseeing the Motor Vehicle and Division. And John Carlos, who's very valuable to me at this time, he's my insurance man, my banking man, and real estate person.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Thank you, Senator. You know, the words that you have just stated were probably one of the most, I guess, effective words that at least the department employees have been waiting to hear. You know, especially to outreach to, you know, the group of legislators, that yes, you know, when you consider health, public safety, and everything else, education, the revenue source comes from Reverend Tax. But, you know, just to answer your question, when we talk about the number of cases that we actually audit, the case inventory works through a pipeline system. And an average auditor probably has an inventory assigned of about fifty cases. But I also understand right now the issue of earned income tax credit, the issue of a lot of exemptions that are going around. The average caseload that an auditor has is about fifty. So we have about nineteen, close to twenty. We have about, you know, a thousand cases that are on inventory, that are actually being worked on. Do we need more? Do we need to audit more? Definitely. Do we need more manpower? Definitely. All of that will augment the entire government of Guam system by training our revenue agents, just like we've done in the past, and even our revenue officers, and even addressing some of the, you know, the laws that were passed that, you know, that go into the business privileged tax laws and the exemptions. But I'll just be specific in answer that question, about a thousand right now.
You have a thousand in the inventory, if you had the more manpower, do you think you can increase the? I mean, are they, we just don't go out to audit for the sake of audit. There are criterias that goes through the system, the tunnel, and it shoots out questionable parts of the tax. What do you foresee? Would you see an increase in the number of taxpayers that needs to be reviewed if you had more people processing it through the tunnel?
Most definitely. You know, as you mentioned, we've had attrition where we've lost revenue agents, we've lost, you know, the expertise. And we've recently hired employees and put them through the first phases of the audit training. That was Revenue Agent One and Two, and we're looking at doing corporate. So we have seasoned revenue agents there, and some of them have been deet out and assigned to other areas. And the reason being is we lack the expertise. And I know we're probably gonna get to addressing, you know, the cuts in staffing and so forth, but every employee is vital at the department. But most definitely, if we had more manpower, we can increase, you know, the audit revenues.
On the other side, just to guesstimate, how many more auditors do you think you need?
Well, you know, the last time I looked at the staffing pattern, the Authorized FTE, I think we were only, probably have eight on the staffing pattern that may be available. I need to confirm that, I'm not sure. But, you know, right now, we have very few senior revenue agents, which are Revenue Agent Fours that are actually doing the corporate work. I think we only have about two, and some of the others are reassigned to other branches to help in the deficient areas. But we really need to work on focusing our revenue agents and auditors into the corporate level. That's where a lot of the money can be made.
Have you, absent any authority, to be able to hire retirees? And that's something that we need to look at. Have you also looked at the possibility, Art, of contacting the regional district offices in terms of retired revenue officers, revenue agents? I remember in the early days, Mr. Charles, he was the Deputy Commissioner. Then we had Lasky, and then we had a number of those folks that were brought in to be able to augment, until we were able to bringing a whole new crew of people. And you know what? That was twenty years ago, and those people that we brought in that were like Corinne, Pasquera, and so forth. Now they're all retired, you know, and they're retired, you know. So now we need to, by the time we start bringing in and training people, have you ever thought or looked at in terms of working out some inter-agency agreement with the Internal Revenue Service, the Treasury Department, to be able to hire retirees? Because we need to bring in the troops to, like I said, fortify and start, you know, having real teeth rather than dentures.
You know, when I first started along with John and Joe, there was a lot of, I guess, workers that were contracted from IRS. But as we go through and we went through the trainings through them, I mean, they were like our mentors. They showed us how to do things, how to audit, how to investigate. We learned, and we felt at that time that we can do what they're doing. We learned their process, we can, we went to school, we learned how to audit. We went through their trainings at times, going even to IRS and sitting in with their agents and learning how to audit through IRS procedures. But as we went through and got that experience from them, at one point of time, we were able to handle the corporate returns and the complicated returns. Then there was, you know, a lot of people, our employees retiring either to the early out or offered half of their pay and they got out. So we suffered in a certain year. And then we started to look, and we hired. Right now, we're in the phase where we're training a lot of our newer employees to get to the point where we feel they're comfortable in auditing returns. We have contacted IRS, and they have, through DOI Funding, trained our people here locally. And we opened this training to the other islands in the area to come in, and if they want to, you know, IRS training, come in and sit with us, and we'll train them too. As for asking IRS potential retirees to come work with us, the pay is too low. I mean, our average salary compared to their salary is very low. We've asked even attorneys if they would like to come over, and when they see that it's the rates that we're paying here, they kind of don't want to work here in Guam. They can make money elsewhere.
Right, but you still won't discount that, you can still- But you still won't discount that you can still keep going and leaving that. But the core of the people that we trained 20 years ago, they're out, they're retired. So if we remove the barrier that they can come back to the department, that will be a quick way to be able to bring seasoned people back to deal with the corporate aspects of the audit.
Some of them.
Some of them. Well, you make the selection as to who you want to hire, and at the same time, you want to bring in the people who are graduated from the University of Guam, enter a training program. All of those things has been done since as far back as 75. What the issue is, is the human resources that goes through with the process of attrition as they go out. And like you said, the early out. I mean, a lot of people still had a lot of longevity in being able to continue, but it was something that was too good to pass up on a personal basis, but it does impact you. So I, again, I just wanted to see in terms of the audit side, how about on the intelligence part, the referrals for, do you have a caseload? Just numbers?
Yes, we have CIB, Criminal Investigation Branch. We have about four people in there. Three, a staff of three in the Criminal Investigation Branch.
There's three people in the Criminal Investigation Branch?
Yes. We had problems in the past. We've had closures of cases within that branch, but when we send it to be prosecuted, it didn't go through the system. So, you know, all that work went to nowhere. What we wanted to do at those, when we first took over, was to show the people that, you know, if you don't follow the law, you're going to face the consequences, and that never happened. The cases were, all returned back to me per a letter from the AG. And right now, we're still working some cases, and we're working closely with the AG and even looking for funding through DOI to fund an attorney. We met with them two months ago, and they said they're willing to pay half the cost of an attorney. So we just, I just need to work with the AG.
Do you have the authorization for an attorney for the department?
I do have the authorization, but the funding comes through my Tax Enforcement Fund, which I've already used to collect taxes.
And that Tax Enforcement Fund is not enough to underwrite the cost of your in-house legal counsel?
It's not enough because, you know, when they first authorized us that funding source, I went out and I hired auditors, collectors, processors, and they're using that fund to pay that, those positions.
Right, so...
So I either have to move them off the...
No, that's fine. No, I see where you're coming from. You have to make a choice sometimes, and, you know, that's the, I wish you didn't have to make those choices and you just go full force ahead, you know? And be able to do that because I really honestly and truly believe, because I have been there and I've seen that, that what voluntarily compliance can occur is as a result of the stability and the consistency of revenue and tax. And, you know, Art, you should be, and of course, John and all you folks should be, you know, highly commended. So that's on the Intelligence Division. How about on your revenue collection side? How's that?
We've hired several people in that branch. Through the years, when we looked at the history of our collections, we started off, I believe, the first year in 2002 or '03, we started off with a collection amount of like 12 million a year, and to date, we're over $80 million a year.
80 million, from 12 to 80?
Right. This is because of the personnel we put in there and the training and the standards that they have to, through IRS training, to collect the monies the right way. In the past, we had several problems of no tax advocate, no, I guess, teeth. And when we were taken to task through court with a case where we lost because we didn't even put what was required as a taxpayer advocate, so anytime we sent out a notice of collection, that name has to be there so that if these people don't agree with something that we did, they have an avenue to go to. So we lost a lot of that one case, and it forced the issue that we need to follow IRS procedures. Every time there's a change, we need to follow their changes.
Yeah, of course, because it's the mirror provision. But Art, do you have a name now that you can attach to?
Yes, we do.
And that gentleman or lady is who?
Right now, it's in transition. Mr. Frank Leongrero has resigned, and right now, we're looking at Raymond Blas.
A former revenue, Department of Revenue and Taxation. Art, so you've increased from 12 million to 80 and because of some of the technical aspects that you need to require you?
It has to do a lot too with the system that we've implemented through the years. When you paid a tax in the past and you paid it down at DOI, there were problems trying to track that payment to an individual person. So, you know, if a payment was partially paid and the tax gets assessed and the payment doesn't reach a taxpayer, we have a called a TDA, Tax Delinquent Account. That is sent to a collector, and the collector will go out and knock on his door, and that guy would say, hey, I paid my tax. Why are you knocking at my door? We've come up with our POS system where you make a payment at Treasure Guam or anywhere in our office or Treasure's office, that payment would immediately credit your account so that when a TDA comes out, it's an accurate number and we can go after that taxpayer to make payments.
Yeah. Art, do you have the authority, the Department of Revenue and Taxation has the authority to deputize, it's almost like outsourcing, deputize former revenue officers or revenue agents? You know, this idea, it's always been in my mind, even at the hospital, it's like Paladin. You remember Paladin? You know, the television bounty hunter? Revenue officers, that's what they do. They go out and try to find people who are, you know? And yes, I am dating, this was Richard Boone, you know? And he goes Paladin, Paladin, where do you roam? And I say that, you know, while I may have some humor in it.
What about Dog the Bounty Hunter? Dog, he's more contemporary.
But what I was saying, do you have the authority to be able to deputize revenue, I mean, deputize former whoever to be able to act on your behalf and you, what's that, pay them for the services, whether it's our salaries or a percentage? Do you have that kind of authority under the Internal Revenue Code or under the Guam Code? And you don't have to worry about the benefits, you don't have to worry about all the other stuff, but it's something that might augment because they're already trained. They've got 30 years, 20 years, and so forth.
Would you consider them full-time employees or like a contract where they come in?
No, yeah, it's like a contract. What you bring in, you know, what you bring in, and you guys can work out the details, they're not going to be a government of Guam employees per se. I'm looking at another option other than the double-dipping. You know, if we allow for the double-dipping of former revenue officers, revenue agents, taxpayer assistants, and so forth, but to be able to identify, will Revenue and Taxation on the Internal Revenue Code or Guam Code allow you to deputize individuals to be your, in addition to your collection inside, officers, revenue officers?
I'll let Paul answer that, but my answer to that or my reservations about allowing outsiders to look at taxpayer accounts or giving them authority to look at outside accounts is disclosure issues.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I'm just saying, you take care of all of those things. I mean, if you deputize them, you know, they must abide by, just like Paladin, he has to abide by the laws of the land, but you don't have to be able to, you see, similar to that of the hospital, they have to disclose a patient's financial. But all I ask, given all of those other stuff, is there anything there that that's a possibility? You know, now where some people used to, they say, think about all the boxes. I'm just looking at some possibilities to be able to bring in, because right now, it's not, you can't pick up just anybody to go out and say, hey, go do the corporate taxes and so forth. I mean, you guys have been, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, they've been trained, you know, so, and these are potential resources. It's just a yes or no answer.
I'll let Paul answer.
Yeah, it's not whether, how you feel about it. I said, do we have the authority or not? It's just a...
I've seen it in the past where they've hired people, outsiders, revenue agents from the United States to work with our offices, but they're under a employment.
Yeah, no, this one is here locally. They're all running around.
On their own. My only issue is, you know, there's a 6103 code section, 6103 of the code really...
It's prohibitive then.
Right, right.
It's prohibitive, but maybe you can just look for that as food for thought, little bit more research.
My only issue is Guam is very small, and when I don't have the control over or revenue tax over who has accounts for everybody's returns and issues of, you know, somebody running for office or running, and then all of a sudden, issues of tax collection or tax things come up that would discredit a person when...
So maybe the real option is to just bring them in as an employee who will double-dip?
That to me is, my issue...
And you have an employer-employee relationship?
Yeah. See, that to me is a Band-Aid fix. It's just to raise funds, but my real issue now is how do we, in the long term, handle collections? And you've got to train young people so that when they get, you know, they experience how to collect, they're there forever, not just for, you know, six months and...
No, but what I'm saying is that you can do that, and I encourage you to do that, and I would, at the appropriate time, should the revenue reviews, that I will support giving you the teeth about it. Now, how you do that, I will not micromanage you. If you can do a combination of bringing from the University of Guam graduates out of the Business and Public Administration, come down, come in there and with, while they're training and they're going the six months, this also, six months is also collecting, also dealing with the assessment. Once you've already assessed them, you lock them in, right? You don't lose it after three years if we don't process it. So it's a combination of both, Art. It's just not, not one. You got, and that's the way it's been in the past, so I want to make sure, because you have, like in the Intelligence Division, you have only three, you had three cases that, it takes a lot to put a case ready to even set down.
It does.
But just one that gets caught, you talk about the talk of the town, you say, oh-oh, Revenue and Taxation is back in town. And in that area, the other thing that I was looking at, on fees, Art, you got a lot of fees, right?
Yes, I do.
About how many fees do you have in your department? Just your department?
There's a lot. There's, you know, in each branch.
Many, many, many. I know, but seriously.
Each branch has certain fees that they collect.
Okay, so you have about 100 fees? Okay, never mind. Whatever the number is, okay, okay, let me ask. You know, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, because it's been like almost 30 years since I was there, but for example, you know, when they do the triennial appraisal on your real property tax, right?
Yes.
They do an assessment on what your, the tax will be. Then there's a Board of Equalization, right? If you disagree, you go over to the Board of Equalization and you contest it or, and you know, you deal with that. I'm wondering if you, I think you guys have the authority to look at the fees and go through the Administrative Adjudication Act now. Am I correct?
What I was told lately was, and I don't know if it's true, I don't have an attorney to advise me on this, but if the fees are codified by law and there's no exceptions to adjust the fees in that law, are we allowed to put that through the AAA procedure?
Okay, so maybe you can get that, maybe our legal counsel can answer that, or somebody at the Attorney General, maybe just request for an opinion. Maybe Mr. Charles Strutman can be able to answer that question. The reason why I was saying that, you know, was that that may be a possibility, Mr. Chair, that you look at, you know? Give the agencies the authority to set their fees, and then if people, if he sets a fee on my driver's license and makes it $100, and I don't agree with that, I can come in and say, hey, look, you know, I don't think that that's based on whatever reasons, but that's something to think about in that area. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for bearing with me, but I felt I needed to say that and get that off my chest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Shumiz. And I could tell with Mr. De La Rosa here, his eyebrow rose a bit when it talked about the fees, so I know there are going to be some recommendations maybe coming down the pike soon.
Yeah, as we mentioned, I think it was yesterday or the day before, that we are exploring other revenue enhancement alternatives and increasing or adjusting the revenue tax fees to match the cost of providing the services, one of those options that we have available.
Okay, anyway, thank you very much, Senator Shumiz. Senator Rispio, I'll tell you what, can we just take a couple of minutes recess? Just a couple of minutes recess? Senator Rispio had the floor, but the senior senator has raised his hand.
I'm just going to be very brief.
No objections, Mr. Chairman. I clearly understand that the senior senator has those kinds of privileges, and I play by the rules.
Membership has its privileges. Speaker Pinkel, senior senator.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Art, earlier, the Attorney General, Alicia Limtiaka, was here. I raised the question regarding the legal counsel, that you, your department really needs help on that area. And I asked her whether there's a possibility that perhaps they, you can work together with her, and if there's any change in laws that we need to address, like right now, to address that, because you need somebody that specializes in income tax, right? Taxes?
Right.
You do?
Yes, I do.
Yes, and from the information she gave me, that she would look into it, you know, immediately, and that you should also follow up on it, okay? Because I think that this is the time that we need to sort of, that she realized the fact that you need to work with her on this matter, so if you can just follow through on that, I think that would definitely help because other than also the enforcement part, what good is it to have, you know, investigate a lot of things and you bring it to court, but you don't have anybody to actually litigate it and follow through? So can you just follow up with the Attorney General on that?
Yes, we're working together.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have to echo the sentiments of the senator from Malolo, but he reminds us that he's the senator from Guam, like we all are, because we're elected at large. But I couldn't stress enough how important revenue tax is in terms of generating, collecting the revenue that's required to run the government for the entire fiscal year. And this is why we've expressed concern when you just arbitrarily do across-the-board cuts, not taking into consideration some agencies' requirements and how that is necessary to run the critical areas of the government, namely health, education, and public safety. Right now, we've, the committee of the whole, not by a voice vote, but just by procedures, adopted 453 million as a revised revenue estimate. The administration has reported tracking 434 million, so the $19 million difference is obviously going to be made up through the efforts of revenue and taxation. Is that correct?
Part of it, I believe.
Part of it, because there's no, there's no longer any GRT proposals for an increase or, nor there is any authorization to borrow any money so far in this bill. So could you tell us, the director, how much and specifically from what areas are you going to collect in regard to the income tax amnesties and the corporate and real estate taxes? What are the final numbers?
I'll let John answer that.
I think we were talking about the amnesty on the income tax and the real property. Am I right?
Corrie, how much of this, I know there was minor adjustments made in some categories, but the bulk of this $19 million, which is the difference of 434 versus the 453 that the committee of the whole adopted, so of this $19 million, how much is the entire island, I should say? this nineteen million dollars, how much is the entire island, I should say, looking to revenue tax to try to collect this money? And where's that money going to come from?
I'm just going to speak in terms of what we anticipate on the amnesty.
Correct.
Which is basically twenty-five million dollars on the withholding, individual, corporate, and and GRT. And the remaining five million is on the real property tax.
Yeah, it's about, that's what I thought. It's about thirty million. But the reason why the difference is nineteen is because there's been significant adjustments from the governor's revised bill for fiscal year two thousand and seven versus what was adopted by the legislature. Corporate income tax is going to be down by ten million, withholding taxes down by thirty-three million, other taxes down by five hundred forty-three thousand, licensing fees a hundred ninety-one thousand, and department charges. But when you add in the thirty million dollars that your that the administration is purporting to collect within these two programs, the difference comes out to nineteen million. I want to ask specifically your methodology in determining this thirty million dollars that we can collect from the amnesty programs. Do you have any past collection experiences? Or did you use any models to determine whether or not within the next six months, revenue tax will be able to collect this thirty million?
The only experience was we did back in, I believe, in nineteen ninety-nine. We did an analysis on on those collections, and I believe we collected twenty-eight million dollars during that amnesty period. But it's for a longer period of time. I think it's for six months. The one we're looking at is is basically for three months only. But if you look at the number of collections back then, and we look at the receivables back then, and then we look at the the currency bills now, and the amount that we anticipate to collect on on those receivables, on the by individuals, corporate, withholding, and and GRT, it came close by percentage. I think it was like twenty-four to twenty-six percent collection based on receivables. The only thing that we're doing now is it's a shorter period of time, but we're doing more actively in in trying to to collect on these amnesty, where we're sending out letters, identifying everybody that owes the government, whether it's income tax or or GRT, and and specify the the amount of tax, the amount of interest, and the penalties, and the total. And we're advising them if they if they would like to take the this amnesty program and waive those interests and penalties.
Yeah, and so it would seem to be, it would seem to me, Mr. Chairman, that if we were to pass this bill as is, that we would be adding insult to injury, where we're saying to revenue tax, go collect thirty million dollars for the next six months, but yet we're going to cut you by about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And I think that's how we must address this budget bill before us in a very methodical fashion to weigh out those kinds of considerations. Do you do you think, Director, that, I know it's it though it's challenging to collect that thirty million dollars in the next six months, but would it be more challenging to have to get that mandate and still have to reduce your operations by about two hundred and eight thousand dollars?
It is going to be a challenge, because our our budget is made up of personnel mostly and contracts for for Xerox, our rent, our our computer system. So those, we we need the building, we need the computer system, we need Xerox. So what's how it's going to affect us is in personnel.
I mean, I'm sure that you're, and you've been a very good fighter for your employees, Director, and I'm sure that your employees will kind of wonder, how could you ask me to collect this amount of money, and yet I'm going to be one of those agencies that are going to receive a cut? So you have many senators in here that, as we go through this budget, unfortunately, the rule is we cannot make any motions to to spare any agencies from any cuts. But at the end, we can go back and make those kinds of decisions and abide by those rules. Could you just tell me, in your opinion, why do you believe that in various revenue categories, like the corporate tax is down by ten million, withholding tax is going to be down by thirty-three million, almost every category from public law twenty-eight dash one forty-nine to the governor's bill before us has a has a decrease? Withholding taxes, interest and penalty, thirty-three million dollars. The legislature projected a hundred eighty-eight million dollars. The governor's revised budget is a hundred fifty-five point one million.
I think we had that discussion about two weeks ago, and I'm trying to refresh my mind of what I said. I believe what what most of those categories we looked at, we noticed some spikes because of the the bad years. The increase in in revenues in in certain years were very high compared to other years within like six or seven years. So we were just looking at averages. That's a very conservative number that we were looking at. But that's a number we felt was almost a hundred percent attainable. All the other numbers, it could be attained, but we were very conservative with the numbers by looking at all the other years and saying, hey, you know, it looks like it's only a hundred and fifty million or a hundred fifty-eight million that we can look at, because the other years were averaging about that amount. We weren't looking at the current year and how it's increasing a lot through the months.
But we're just six months into the fiscal year, and for the corporate tax section alone, the legislature passed a budget bill that said we were going to collect seventy-two point three million, not even within six months. It's it's going to be revised downward by ten point eight million. I mean, that's a huge, huge variance. And this is not, this doesn't mean that your agency is not collecting the money. I wanted to state for the record that this is a consequence of having overstated revenue estimates. It makes it look like you haven't collected ten million dollars. But in theory, in in actuality, that amount, as you just said, should have been more realistically projected based on actual cash collections and those past experiences. And that's why I asked, based on past experiences, do you believe that it is possible to generate thirty million dollars in these amnesty programs from now until the end of the fiscal year?
I'm sorry, Senator Rispio, if you if I could just explain from a general standpoint how we approach the revenue projections. Early on, in the discussions about the the crisis we're facing, there were such disparities with what numbers were being estimated for what the revenue projections would be. So we tested BBMR's tracking against several models, and we arrived at what is a range of potential revenue estimates, forecasting estimates for the year. At the at the most conservative level was our four thirty-four number, which, as Art stated, was what we're comfortable will be achieved. At the highest end of it was a revenue estimate somewhere around four fifty, which made us feel like everything had to kind of fall in line for us to reach those levels. And and we also had a middle estimate of about four forty-two. All of these were at a ninety percent confidence level and within that five percent margin for error. And so the four thirty-four is is what we believe is the most conservative, but the most achievable of it. But it is certainly, but there are certainly indicators in the economy that that we may be able to come up to higher numbers, like building permits have gone up significantly just in February as compared to February last year. What we could not reconcile was when that money would be realized as revenue to this government.
But your license fees and permits, you're proposing they go down by a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars?
Because we, when we when we looked at some of those variables, we didn't weight them so heavily, because we didn't, we couldn't determine when that when that activity would translate into actual revenues into the government. And so I'm not saying that, that all I'm saying is that on some of those variables that were uncertain, we did not weight very heavily into the into determining this.
I mean, I'm, I don't want to get into a discussion on revenue analysis, Mr. Chairman. I know you're being very patient with me, but I, this is a very important topic, and it's in line with the mandates that we give, that this government gives revenue and taxation. But on February ninth, I wrote a letter to BBMR Director saying that our office is tracking four hundred thirty-two million, so we're more comfortable with the four thirty-four versus any other projections that you may see out there, conservative versus higher estimates. And we got to the four thirty-two by taking the last three years of collection experiences, because God's been good to us, no natural or man-made disasters, and it was the most cleanest that we can go back, that we didn't have any other variables to affect the revenue collection. So that's why that's a more realistic number. So we could get the third, the thirty million dollars, right?
We're going to do our best to collect it.
Yeah, and I and, Mr. Chairman, after hearing that, I just can't see how the legislature will proceed without even increasing revenue tax budget. And I'm not grandstanding. If you're going to tell someone to give you thirty million dollars, you are given the tools and the resource to do it, and I'm prepared to be a part of that. Thank you, Director.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Rispio. Senator Tina Munya Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, at this time, notwithstanding any of the House, I'd like to yield my time to Senator Judy Wampat.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your...
And thank you so much, Senator Barnes, Munya Barnes.
Collegiality. Senator Wampat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have real quick questions. On your your vacancies that that you provided, this is the long sheet, right, the spreadsheet?
Yes.
And I was looking at the positions, titles, and the salary. And I don't know how in the world you're ever going to recruit any one of these individuals. I can't believe that you actually have a licensed examiner at six thousand dollars, six thousand seven. Is that correct, the starting salary?
Senator, if you look at the bottom line.
Where?
It says, we're reflecting that small amount.
Oh, that's a new...
We're we're only funding that for ten pay period. We're not funding for the full year. That's why, that's a proportion of the salary.
Okay, I see. I see that. Okay, so anyways, my question that I'm leading up to here now, for these individuals, a lot of them are at the entry level. And because, and I grieve all the speakers about really supporting an agency that generates and collects monies, of course, for to operate the entire government of Guam, that we need to to support you. But I'm wondering, and John, this is where you come in as well, is that we have heard that there are individuals that are being hired, of course, by other departments and agencies like Public Health and yesterday, GPD, from individuals from the governor's office. And I'm wondering throughout the government, though, is that there may be employees that could body, position, and salaries be actually transferred to revenue tax to then be retrained or to be trained to take on these positions to assist them? I'm I'm not saying for all of them, but at least those at entry level, if that is is possible to help, you know, the department. I mean, I realize that if they're going to give all these dollar amounts up and we need to support them, we've got to try to find creative ways to help them as well.
Absolutely, Senator. I think, just to echo some of Art's concerns earlier, it it's absolutely doable. I think some of the concerns were the permanency of those employees. These are classified positions, and we're filling them with unclassified people. And I think the greater concern was the confidentiality that goes with that. And if you put a temporary person in there to access tax records, how do you control that information after they leave that service?
Yes, that I understand. But there are other classified, you know, personnel as well throughout the the government. The classified individuals is what I'm saying, where they could be transferred. So the body, the position, and the salary, not just body and position, but all three will be transferred and be a permanent employee to revenue tax, then to train them so that they can assist them. Now, so so that is one, of course, you know, way of of looking at it and trying to to assist them. The other, and I don't know, of course, that's going to have to be up to the executive branch to to make that decision. But I would think that you're depending so much on revenue tax to to generate or to, you know, collect on 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 monies owed to the government, that this is definitely one way in which the government can assist.
We'll certainly explore that, Senator.
The the other, the one last question I have is that last, in the last, this particular budget, didn't the department get an additional five hundred thousand dollars to assist your department to be able then, and you were authorized by law, to hire their unclassified employees for the systems and programming administrator, junior systems programmer, senior programmer, and and down the line? And this was a request that, you know, was made, and we had made an amendment to include those. So my question is that, were you given then, were the monies released then to hire all these individuals?
The the positions were authorized, but the funding wasn't, didn't come with the positions. The reason why I asked for that is there's numbers, data is part of a major portion of our function of of the finance side, that, you know, if you want to extract data from all the ten forties, line seven, which which is wages of all, you know, ten forties, ten forty As and ten forty Ez's, I don't have the staff. At the time I was asking for 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 these positions, I only had one person in that position, in that branch. And every time the computer went down and the media, you know, come around and say, what's happening with your computers? One person handled everything. So I didn't have the the technical people to extract data from all the data, figures from all the data that we had in in our in our possession, to make analysis of where the monies are, who's paying taxes, and how come this industry's not paying taxes. It's all there, but I didn't have the technical personnel to make that happen.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't even ask you to answer that first question that I had asked earlier about employees, the body, position, and the salaries then being transferred permanently to your your department, and whether that would assist your, would it be acceptable or not?
Yeah, if if the person that is going to be transferred over has the type or personality to work with us, we tried working, we tried that back in two thousand and three, and we we have a lot of employees that came over that were not wanted by by the other, the giving, the donating department. And they would come over and they thought they can just sit around and and, you know, business as usual. And it doesn't work that way where in revenue tax, when you come in, each person is tasked to do something. And we look at what they've done for the month, the week, the day. And if they're not working, we kind of like ask them to explain why. And when we when we tried this project back in two thousand and three, we were getting, you know, like social workers, people that weren't able to face the public. It takes a type of personality to sit in front of somebody and say, pay me ten thousand dollars. You owe me ten thousand dollars. If you're not able to take the abuse by the taxpayers, when they come back to you and tell me, you know, or tell our staff they're not going to, or and, you know, a lot of words in between, it takes a special personality to sit there and take that.
But but some of the positions here are like the key punch operator or a data control clerk, one. So...
Those we can work with, but they, you know, when you when you give us a transferee from another department, their their pay is kind of higher than than the people that I have there. I think that was an issue several years ago, when we needed to key in some information, and they hired outside, and they were making a lot more than the contract, you know, for that several months, were making a lot more than the people that were doing the job. So it was demoralizing to see somebody who comes in and you're going to train them, and they make more money than you, than the people working. But it helps. I mean, I think it's 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 position and each person we have to look at that it would be beneficial to the department. We can't just take everybody and transfer them in, and, you know, they don't have the right attitude or the right mentality to to do what we're asking them to do.
I I understand, but but I'm just thinking that if there are these positions that are available, maybe it can be treated where they're not, of course, transferred yet, and they go through an interview process, you know, with with your department, with your supervisor. an interview process, you know, with your department, with your supervisors, and then, you know, a selection can be made. And what I'm saying is just that because the monies are there already, the salaries are there from the other departments and agencies, and, you know, we just need to retrain them and transfer them. But of course, I understand what you're trying to say for certain personalities, but all those, I think, they're not an insurmountable, you know, insurmountable problems that cannot be resolved, even the salaries. Because I mean, if we're talking about across-the-board type, you know, decreases, furlough and all those, I mean, the bottom line is that I think individuals would want definitely the opportunity to be transferred where they can, they can be working, you know, and be useful. So, but those are just thoughts, and I think at this time, we just need to be open to a lot of, you know, creative ways of trying to be able, especially in your departments, to keep you functioning, and at the same time with other departments and agencies, being able to make the cuts and stay and live within their means. But that's about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity, and thank you, Senator Munya Barnes.
Okay, thank you, Senator Wampat, and thank you again, Senator Munya Barnes. We have Senator Frank Blas, and then Senator Frank Blas Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And gentlemen, I guess now, good afternoon. Thank you for enduring us. All right, I'm just gonna ask a very simple question, and assuming that we're gonna have to continue on with the cuts, and recognizing that revenue taxation is proposed to get a two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-dollar cut in its budget, what's that gonna mean to the operations? What are we looking at scaling back or suspending?
Again, I only have personnel and contracts mostly on my allotments, my budget. If it comes down to cuts, it's gonna affect personnel, because I still have to pay my rent, my computer vendors, my Xerox machines, those are necessary. If it comes down to personnel, we're looking at affecting probably fifteen employees if we were to furlough them for those periods. The reason why I say fifteen, there's the newer employees, there are less experienced, I need the experience from the older employees to carry on the work that they're doing. They're more productive, they know what they're doing, versus the new ones that came in.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna go back to, I guess, the infamous BBMR report, okay, with regards to... This report here shows that as of March thirteenth, you had received authorization or seventy percent of your allotment. Okay. Your total appropriation was eight million two hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred ninety-eight. Your year-to-date allotment, seventy percent, you received five million eight hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven. Now, I recognize that that's not money that you spent, that's money you were authorized to spend at that time, right? Am I correct?
Correct.
That leaves you with less than two million dollars for the rest of the year.
That's correct.
Subtract two-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars from that.
Correct.
Okay, and so, and so, I need to bring this up, and I'm bringing this up, Mr. Chair, you know, for the purposes of, and I agree with my colleagues. You know, the situation that we're faced with today is obviously we're short in revenues, we're short in cash, and dealing the heavy blow that you're gonna have to take for this may be counterproductive to actually bringing in the revenues that we need to be able to stave off, you know, some of the concerns, albeit, you know, just for this year, but even for next year, you know, in the years to come. And so, I'm just, and I appreciate and I thank you for your listing of the number of vacancies that you... Are these funded vacancies that you've got, that you're... Is that the listing that I got earlier?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so your reduction is gonna come from not filling those, some of those vacancies, too?
Part of it, yes.
Part?
The reason why it's at a high rate, seventy percent, is because we, you know, when we signed the contract for the rent and the vendors and Xerox and my computer vendors, we already encumbered those numbers. So that's why it's kind of high. But it hasn't been spent yet, because the year hasn't been out. We just reserved it, encumbered it.
Okay. But now, can we survive with the cut?
Surviving, yes, but it's gonna...
It's gonna hurt.
It's gonna hurt. It's gonna hurt revenues.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Senator Calvo. Yeah, the chair, you say you have the privilege, but Senator Judy Gutters.
Thank you. Mr. Loggins and Revenue Tax folks, gosh, I know there, I notice there's no women in your cadre of managers.
She was here, but I don't know where she went.
Okay. Woman power, Mr. Loggins, they can solve the financial problems of our government.
The way we operate, ma'am, is we're gentlemen, we made her go eat lunch.
Okay, okay. Well, just so you know, the women, you know, the women are good with purse strings, they know how to manage money, they know how to find money, and they know how to spend money.
One woman means ten men.
Okay, now, Mr. Loggins, I appreciate your candidness in explaining just how this cut in your budget, the proposed cut in your budget, will affect your operation. But my question to you first is, did you talk this over with the governor and impress upon him what the impact would be if this budget cut occurred at Revenue Tax?
Yes, I did.
And what was his sentiments? We're curious.
The way it works, ma'am, is everybody should fill the crunch, whether it's a cut-in pay or whatever. We need, we need to meet our revenues. We can't overspend. So that's why we are willing to take the hit, but it's gonna affect revenues.
See, that concerns me, Mr. Loggins, because it sounds like one big conspiracy by special interests to disarm your department. To disarm your department by taking away your ability to collect maximization of funds for this government. And I cannot believe, and I do respect our governor, I love our governor and our First Lady, but I cannot believe that he would allow your department to be disarmed, just so that can be equal for all the departments and agencies to have a cut. There are departments that are not as equal as others, and there are some that should be more equal than others. Yours is one of them. Your department should be properly funded, you should have the personnel you need to do your job. And I look at this with really no disrespect, but I'm just wondering in my mind, you know, because I have a very creative mind, very critical mind, I'm wondering if this is just some conspiracy by special interests who benefit from your department not having the resources you need to do your job? The special interests that get the special exemptions, the special interests that get the GRT exemptions, the special interests that have sucked this government dry for decades. That's what concerns me. And when it comes time for us to be able to evaluate these cuts, I will be among those that will want to restore the cuts to your department, and not only that, enhance your revenue by taking monies away from other agencies that are not as critical. I support your mission. I support your ability to collect the monies that are owed so that our people don't suffer on the island. In addition to that, Mr. Loggins, I want to suggest to you, for those folks that owe money to Revenue Tax, whether it's income tax, GRT, corporate taxes, or anything else, you need to report them to the credit rating agencies, just like private companies report individuals that owe money to them to credit agencies, you should be doing the same thing. When I was an administrator at the University of Guam, we tried to do this. We sent the names of individuals that were perennially late in paying their tuition obligations to the university. These are people on Protext scholarships, these are people that benefited from the generosity of our citizenry through these scholarship programs, people who are physicians, people who are engineers, people living off-island, making big salaries. We reported them to the credit agencies, to force them to pay their obligations to the university. You know, no one wants to have a bad credit rating. It hurts. So I would want to suggest to you that you consider doing that. I think this would be one way for you to get some of the money that's owed to you. Would you care to respond to that, Mr. Loggins? What do you think of that idea?
If you owe tax and we give you all the notices to come in and pay, there's a certain point when we file liens and levies at Department of Land Management, and that will affect your credit rating.
But is the information reported to the credit organizations?
Yes, it is.
It is?
If you owe in Guam, and you go and move to the States and you try to run away, and you try to get a loan in the States, it's gonna show up in your credit rating.
But how about here on Guam? Does it show here?
Yes, it does.
Okay, well, that's a tool that you have. I would suggest to you maybe to check with Land Management to see if in fact they're doing that, to double-check, because I haven't heard much about it, but I think this is a good tool, I'm glad to hear if that is happening, that's good. Now, Mr. Loggins, in addition, I want to commend your department. I want to commend every single employee that you have there, because every time I go there, and I go there frequently, you know, I transact business frequently, they are polite, they are professional, and they are doing their job. Revenue Tax has come a long way, and I think you have a staff there that is committed to their mission. Every time I see someone there, they say, "Judy, can you please do something about the special exemptions? Can you please do something about the Dave Santos Act? Can you please do something to really help our government by making everybody pay their fair share?" And I always tell them, "I'm gonna do that." Now, with reference to that, Mr. Loggins, this legislature, I'm sure, would like to have additional information. I know you gave me some preliminary information on the effects of tax exemptions, but have you done more work on that? And what can we expect from you? I know Doris Brooks is doing an audit on all the special interest tax exemptions, what it's costing the people of Guam. But is your agency doing more than that, or more of it as well? And are you gonna give us some recommendations? Do you remember I wrote to you, I asked for specific recommendations on what you think we should do?
I'll let John answer that. He's...
Under the tax exemptions on GRT, right? All this GRT. I believe we provided a copy, I guess, on our presentation, on the effects of those exemptions.
Was that passed down?
Yes.
Just now?
No, back in March fourteenth.
March fourteenth?
Oh, gee, I don't think I got that.
We passed it out in March fourteenth, and what we did was we went through our system and we pulled out all the exemptions by activity.
You know, I didn't get that, Mr. Chairman, what happened? Maybe they want us to see it. Somebody doesn't want me to see it. I want to see that.
Yeah, I did see this.
Yes, it was part of the oversight package.
I didn't get one. If someone could provide me a copy, I'd love to see it. I'll study that. Okay, I need that. But did you give us specific recommendations? You know, we don't want the economy to collapse, but we also want to make sure that we start looking at these exemptions, because it's costing the people of Guam too much money. Are you gonna give us recommendations, Mr. Loggins?
Yes. When it comes to exemptions, exemptions are, again, for reasons given, let's say, a small business or a certain company needs it. Our philosophy at Revenue Tax is everybody who owes or does something on Guam should pay tax.
Very good. So that would be your, basically, that would be your recommendation?
Everybody should pay their fair share of taxes.
I was shocked the other night, our public auditor was on television, Doris Brooks. Did you hear her? Doris said that she found out that one of the biggest companies on Guam, doing business on the base as almost a sole contractor, is not paying GRT. Did you hear that? I was shocked by that.
I don't know what company that is.
It's the company that has won the contract for the military services on the base, subcontract. Yeah, subcontract. Big company, though.
That's...
Maybe you should mention the name of the company later on, not on the air.
Yeah, I'm not mentioning the name, but I'm just saying, I'm concerned about that.
That's a good idea, Dr. Check.
Yeah, with respect to this also, Mr. Chairman, this would be my last comment.
There's an exemption on contracts, there's an exemption for subcontractors.
Why?
In other words, if you're a general contractor and you subcontract a contract out, that portion of subcontract, subcontract out to the subcontractor is exempt from GRT. So...
But, you know, most...
In other words, if I'm the general contractor and I give it to somebody else, another contract, which is part of the contract, that portion is exempted by law.
That doesn't make sense to me, Mr. Chairman, but we can look at that law and get some rationale for it. The other point I wanted to make was, and I'm very serious about this, really, over the years, I have seen very little attention paid to reinforcing the needs of the Department of Revenue Taxation. It really is almost a conscious effort to keep them disarmed, you know, keep them from being able to maximize their potential to generate revenue for this government. When you talk to the average citizen out there, they'll tell you, you know, "We don't mind paying our share if everybody else pays their share." And what they say to me is, "Why is it that certain kind of businesses on Guam have all these waivers and exemptions and so forth, when we have to pay through the nose?" So, Mr. Chairman, I think in this regard, that, you know, we really need to work with Revenue Tax and our public auditor when she issues her audit with respect to all these exemptions and fee waivers and so forth, and determine as a legislature what is really proper, what is fair and reasonable at this point in time. I think that one of the reasons our government is on the verge of collapse and suffering financially is because we've just given too much away. We can't afford it. We need to start recouping some of these monies and evaluate what kinds of things would really merit an exemption. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Adie Calvo.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate the freshman senator for her energy and her vibrancy. All of a sudden, it got Neil excited. I'm kind of glad to be the senator speaking after the former, the previous speaker. And we need that enthusiasm, and we need that energy and vibrancy. I want to do, I want to make a comment, because some of the legislation that has been enacted in the past, I was talking to the former speaker, in particular to military, the GRT's exemptions. I recall, that was several years ago, but when that was enacted into law, there was a purpose for it, and there was a concern about our local businesses being in a fair and level playing field with businesses coming in from Texas or Alaska. But the environment has changed. I, just last week, I was looking at a Navy contract, and the Navy contract was very clear that for anyone to win on this particular bid or project, that they would have to follow local Guam licensing laws and statutes. So the military has made adjustments and changes in projects where they have allowed for the local government the opportunity to, again, whether it's a license or a tax, they're gonna have to play by the same rules that all local businesses have. And again, maybe as we revisit the... And again, maybe as we revisit the options available to the government, that what was the environment several years ago, and why, and the reasons and the rationale for enacting certain break, tax breaks, that may not be the same situation today. I did not, I've not seen an Air Force contract, so with that, I'm not too sure whether the Air Force is abiding under the same policies as the Navy, and that's something for the administration to look towards. I did note also that on federal contracts, it's interesting that there is to be a notification by now any entity, if they are to bid on a project or a contract, is that they will notify whether there is any liens or any taxes owed to any government, including the government of Guam. So what my concern is, there, back in the '80s, there was a heck of a lot of projects during the Bush, Reagan-Bush era, and a lot of companies came and went, and I'm sure there's a whole bunch of these companies that are going to be coming back. And with them coming back to try to take advantage of opportunities with the redeployment of Marines and the expansion of the Air Force and Navy, it will allow for the Department of Revenue Tax to also exercise its remedies in regards to obligations of companies that did business here in the '80s. And by the way, is there a statute of limitations? I'm just, I want to throw that question in there.
On collections, it's 10 years.
Ooh, okay.
If they did in the '80s, we already took it off the books.
Okay, so then, anyway, there's a problem now maybe in statutes of limitations. But again, there was that period where many businesses did come and go, and hopefully, again, we can, if, again, if the statute of limitations are, has not been, if they've not gone past the statute of limitations, you know, it's now incumbent on Revenue Tax to look for these companies and have them make good on their obligations.
Maybe, sir, if I make, may I make a suggestion? On these contracts, why don't we tax them upfront, not when they get the money? I mean, tax them when the military gives them their money, take the 4% right off the top. That way, we don't have to worry about the companies paying it.
Interesting recommendation. I think this is, you know, obviously, the original proposal by the administration on a 25% increase in GRT, you know, that is now taken out of the equation. But now, there are other areas that we need to look at, and again, the previous speaker mentioned about fairness and equitable paying of taxes, and I think that's something we have to look for. I did want to ask you a specific question in regards to the services that are provided by Revenue Tax, the licenses and those fees. Has Revenue Tax completed their, I do know that there was, you mentioned earlier, Mr. Logan, that Revenue Tax was looking towards a reevaluation for their fees, for services, and for licenses. Has that been completed?
Sir, as far as in the area of insurance and banking, real estate and securities, that's almost complete.
Oh, I'm sorry, almost completed?
Almost complete, as far as insurance, securities, banking, and real estate. We're still looking at some of the figures on business licenses and amusement devices to whether or not, we were getting some feedbacks that some figures might not be reasonable, so we're still looking into those. But other than those areas, we're almost complete. And as far as to motor vehicles, I will hand it over to Mr. Frank Glass.
The reason I'm bringing this up, this has been ongoing for years, so I do know that Revenue Tax has been pushing for a reevaluation for all fees and for services and for license, and for, again, for, let's say, for driver's licenses as well, and permits. So, again, I'm just trying to get an idea if that has been ongoing for a few years, whether you have some sort of completed proposal that will be being put forth to the legislature. And again, the reason I'm bringing this question up, for many months, we know there has been this ongoing discussions, and also within the parameters of the public venues as well, where, you know, speeches have been made, statements have been made, so there, you know, I think everyone always has had an understanding on the area of reevaluation of exemptions on GRTs or in QCs, as well as reevaluation for fees for services. And, you know, it was made known by the administration that they would be presenting these proposals. And obviously, for Bill 74, it has not been presented, but I'm going back to earlier statements made by the administration in regards to these statements made earlier that there would be a reevaluation. So I want to see where you are in the game, and if we are, if you are completed with these evaluations.
We have completed several that we are ready to present to the body in reference to motor vehicle registration, some of insurance and banking, and other fees. We've already analyzed them through the years, and we've come up with numbers that would be reasonable to say, just to cover costs, or even averages that we feel should be collected from, because, you know, certain industries do make a lot more money than others, and their fees might be too low for the type of industry that they're into.
So with what you have completed and ready for proposal, is there a dollar figure pegged on it, and what additional revenues would be gotten?
I think if we are to annualize it, it's about 5.5 million a year. But for the next three or six months, or the remainder of the year, it's probably half of that, so about...
Two and a half million.
Two and a half to three million a year.
Okay, so you're ready with those proposals?
Yes, we are.
Are you going to be presenting that to the legislature next week?
That's what I'm, I want to ask Mr. De La Rosa. Mr. De La Rosa, since the, obviously, you don't have the GRTs, and again, there is proposals that I know Revenue Tax has just made a statement already, is the administration prepared to make those proposals and put them up to the legislative body for deliberation?
Yes, sir, they're prepared in a format that could be easily adopted into the bill.
Yeah, so it is a recommendation from the administration to incorporate some new fee structures?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, even beyond Revenue Tax, we're exploring other fee structures within the government that we're going to offer up to the body.
Okay, and the reason why I'm bringing this up, again, folks, obviously, over the past couple of weeks, there's been readjustments in the revenue side of things, and with those readjustments, obviously conservatism has been the, it has been the policy, and I think that's a good idea, to be very conservative. And so with those conservative decisions made, we've readjusted downward. And obviously, now, as we've gone through these, deliberated over many agencies, there's a lot of agencies that there has been, again, much intrepidation and concern by the body about cuts, especially here with Revenue Tax, where a statement has been made that with cuts, there will be an impact on revenues. So, you know, it puts us in quite a quandary. So again, I'm interested, very interested in seeing what proposals that the administration has for the legislature in regards to at least reevaluations for fees and services, as well as other revenue areas. Anyway, thank you very much, and again, I'm eagerly anticipating the administration bringing up these proposals. Thank you.
Senator Tina Munia Barnes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm just going back, based on some of the comments my colleagues have said earlier, and one thing that strikes me is licensing fees and permits. John, you spoke about why the fees had gone from 1.1643484 down to 1452186, and why you made that explanation. Can you go ahead and explain that to me, why there would be a cut, considering that you just said earlier that there were resolutions to try to work with the license fees and permits?
Thank you, Senator. When I was speaking earlier, I was speaking to the overall revenue numbers. Specific to the licenses and fees, I did also point out that in February, we had an unusual spike in building permits. However, it was an unusual spike, and what we tried to do was kind of balance that out, you know, through the year, but also recognizing that there is economic activity out there, and the economy is growing stronger, but we just couldn't reconcile when we could realize those as revenues. Specific to the licensing fees, when we looked at the confidence levels for the forecasting model, we did take the most conservative. And when we looked at the range of those estimates, even based on the tracking, we did adjust downward based on what we would consider a 2% to 3% growth rate in the economy versus an 8% growth rate, which would be very aggressive for us.
On these licenses, fees, and permits, are we looking at, in any near future, to revisit the fees that are on hand right now and make some increases, whether it be through the AAA process or bring it to the forefront?
Actually, we just spoke about that. We're looking to provide it to the body for consideration and inclusion in the bill. But when the bill was initially brought down to the body, it wasn't, the fee packages were not included or factored into the revenue estimates at all.
And I know earlier, they spoke about how many different fees and licenses and permit fees that they have. Do you have a complete list of what those fees are? I know, I know the number was like, you said, we said 50 or 100, and you guys...
I didn't count it, but we have, we have it in bill form, most of the fees that are going to be...
Just hoping we can get a courtesy copy of that, so that we can revisit each one of them line by line, so that we can share, and, I mean, if there's any proposed increases, and that would be good for the community, at least, at least we have that on hand. And again, I just want to, Mr. Chair, acknowledge and appreciate the Department of Revenue and Tax for all their hard work. I know that during the last two weeks of presentations, you've been consistently here trying to answer any and all the questions that have come before you, and I just really take great appreciation to that, and I'm trying literally to follow the process here, and based on what's perceived, on whether it be misinformation or information that wasn't given right away, or information that we're anticipating, I just have a great appreciation for you guys. I just want you to continue the good work, and if there's anything that we can do on our side to not disarm the Department of Revenue and Tax, because we know that you guys are going to play a major, if not a very vital ingredient to bringing the revenues to our island, I'm going to support those efforts, and I need you to know that.
Appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, he never told that he'll be the Director of Bureau Budget. Senator Ben Tanglinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, gentlemen, for your presence here. The, these spreadsheets are, this is from Revenue Tax, I assume?
Yes, it is.
And this is as of...
March 30.
Oh, this, this is the March 30, so this is the six-month schedule?
Yes, it is.
Basically. And then, this is your total vacancies, all the vacancies in the department. Funded vacancies. And you intend to fill them for these 10 pay periods?
Yeah.
So in the next month and a half?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the, when you say vacated due to promotions, these are individuals that have been promoting, they're occupying another, are they occupying another FTE position, or are they occupying the same position, but now are at a step higher? Is that, or they actually moved into a different one?
When you say promoted, sir, is that like, for example, the property tax eraser one, he was moved up to a property tax eraser two, so that one becomes vacant?
That's right. And two was vacant?
Yes.
So all of these promotions were promoted into a vacant position?
Correct.
Were those positions funded?
Yes.
Okay, so now you have the remaining balance of this position in the budget. Have you paid, everyone that's been promoted, have you paid all of their promotion pay?
Yes.
Back pay and everything?
Retro pay, yes.
So everyone is now paid in the department that has been promoted? Let's say they were promoted in November, and it's now March, and, or, so everyone has gotten their promotion, including any back pay due to processing lag time?
That's correct, yes.
Is that correct, Carl?
As for our budget allotments, we did move them into that slot, and they should be getting the pay. If DOA, is that true? If DOA is the one responsible for making the payment on that GG one, they should have paid it by now. I can't answer for Lou, but most of the staff are not complaining about their pay, so I'm figuring they got their pay increase, or their promotion.
Can you just verify to make sure?
Sure. I'll find out.
Okay, because there may be, yes. There are no other vacancies? You have, you've not hired anybody in the past couple of months?
No.
No? So there's been no additional to the staff of the department?
Yes.
Okay, other than these promotions and these recruitments? Now, when I look at just the allotment schedule, now, there obviously is a big difference between the allotment and the expenditure. When you say that your allotment is 3.5, is that just basically based on what? What did you, and then the expenditure is 2.9, why the difference in the allotment and the expenditure on the personnel side?
Well, the difference, because when we, based on the allotment, we're based on the staffing patterns, sir. So you can remember, in between the times, some people quit, resign, so that reduces our expenditures.
Right.
Yes.
But you still request it for the cash?
No, actually, it's based on BB Mar is the one who monitors our allotments, so...
So BB, see, that's the thing. So, in other words, your payroll, for example, your payroll for this pay period is a million dollars, or, let's say, 100,000. Three people quit between that and the next pay period. When you requested the allotment or released the allotment for you, they still released it as if those three people were in there?
Whatever we send as our schedule is being followed, sir.
But your schedule is based on what? Your actual cash requirement for those?
Yes, as if they are there.
As if they are there?
Yes.
So, okay, so that's the difference. So there's been a 400, $500,000 difference in terms of what you've asked for and what you've gotten, and everybody's gotten paid with that.
That's right.
So you're telling me then that, how can you then tell me that you can't afford the $400,000 cut? If you're telling me that just in the first half of the year, you've actually not needed 400,000 from, because you actually didn't need them because those people weren't there? And because, and I look at the operational side, and I'm not, I'm just trying to, this is just the way you present it, and this is the way I understand it, and if you look at your operational side, you've... And if you look at your operational site, you've encumbered all of that. And that's the thing that I don't understand. If, if your allotment relief, your allotment request is such that they are, they're half a million dollars less. I know you haven't paid rent, correct?
Are you talking only personnel?
Yeah, let's just, let's just focus on the personnel. Why, I'm just trying to figure out why such a big difference between the allotment and the, and the actual expenditure. Okay, the actual cash expenditure.
Because on the allotment, it's just a projected, projected expenditures based on allotment. It's not the actual, sir. That's why it's showing a big difference between expenditures and allotment.
Okay. But that is, but it's what you required. But the expenditure is what you required. In other words, you paid everybody, you paid your income, your, your, your retirement fund. You've paid the health insurance, pay premiums. You've paid the payroll deductions. You've made gross payroll, basically. There's been no outstanding payments to vendors, payroll vendors. I mean, you know, like payroll deductions and so, all of that is current. Is that correct?
My understanding, yes, yes, sir.
So your expenditure then, if for this six months is have been, had been at 2.9, so your actual need for personnel, not counting the, the vacancies you want to fill, is 5.8 would be basically for the next?
Next six months.
Next six months. So about, so about $200,000 less than what you have allocated for your salaries and benefits? Correct?
Well, I have to look into that, sir.
Oh, okay, all right. Now, the contractual, I see that you have requested the allotment basically for the entire, and that's normal that you would encumber all that. But you also, but, but then on the, on the expenditure side, you put expenditure encumbrance. Is there, is there a reason why you did that? Why, why didn't you just show your allotment and then your expenditure? So what has your expenditure been under contractual for six months?
I like, yeah, I did combine expenditures and encumbrance.
You didn't?
Yes, I did.
You did?
Break it down, sir, yes.
Yeah. See, because this way, I don't know if you have, you owe people. You know what I mean? I don't know if there's, there's arrears for contractual. I can't tell because that's not your actual expenditure, so.
We can certainly break down that for you, sir.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I think, for example, rent. Are you, you've encumbered the entire amount for rent. That's the proper way of encumbering it under the budgeting, government budgeting program. But what has been the actual expenditure on rent? What have, nothing? You haven't paid rent?
No, no, we haven't paid rent since October.
Okay. So if we were to cut the budget, that's almost assuming you're not going to pay rent for the rest of the year. You think your landlord's going to be happy? No, I'm sorry. It's, we can't do that. We cannot do that. I don't think it's fair. That's not, you know, we're not in the business here to have these people carry us. And, and I think it's a disservice to the department to have you bear that burden of having to face your landlord and, you know, while he's providing you the resource. Same as contractual. What are, what are the contractual obligations in there? Can, do you, can you, do you have an idea of how much of the 1.99, 1.1 million dollars have been actually paid out in contractual?
Well, I don't have that figures with me, sir, but I have to come back.
Any guess?
Probably about 75% of that.
75% have been actually paid out? Which leaves you, I'm curious, why would you pay out 75% over only half, 50% of the year?
Because, for example, like on our AS400.
Okay.
That's, that's a huge, one of the huge amount in our contractual.
Right, right. But that would mean that you've almost prepaying that though, right? Wouldn't you? Or is it, is it quarterly payments and therefore that's why it's, it's 75% even though only half of?
Well, I have to go get.
Okay, yeah. That'll be, you know, because again, what it means is you may have a little bit of room in personnel. And it'll be very little because if you fund these positions, you're back up to 600,000 and that's only a $49,000 difference. So you really can't afford it. You can't afford the cut. Much more important is that you can't afford the cut because you're not paying the other vendors. And if we cut that, that, you know, that means that we're going to make a conscious decision that we're not going to pay your landlord and we're not going to pay portion of the AS400. We're not going to pay your, your computer services vendor and so forth. And, and those are, especially at the department, even more critical or almost as critical as the people there. Because the people can't work without those systems being up. It's fruitless to, to have them come in and they can't key in the data to the computer system because, you know, you haven't paid your vendor and he decides to shut it off. I mean, we may not be in that position as we were in the past maybe. But, you know, that's the, the nature, that's the reality of it. Is that, you know, we have these obligations there. And if you were to, to receive this cut, then it's a real cut in your current requirement of cash. It's not, some of the other agencies are saying, you know, we're going to fund our, this cut because we're going to not take it from our vacancies, which is okay for the budget. It's not okay for the reality of the financial requirement. But yeah, we may be able to balance it because we've removed an obligation or an authorization for that amount. But it still doesn't help the cash outlay. So in this case, if we remove anything at all, we remove the requirement for a cash outlay that you can't afford. Because there is no room. There is no authorization over and above your current expenditure level. You're almost at, your expenditure level is your operating and expenditure authority is your operating level. So I think that this is, for this department, not only as, with regards to what everybody has said, in that if you guys aren't up to speed, you know, the resources necessary to meet the obligations of this government, not just your department, but all the other agencies are not going to be there. And so it's absolutely doubly critical, I think, for this purpose, for that purpose. But also from the fact that, that any, any reduction in authorization means it's going to impact the current operating requirement. And therefore you will have to affect personnel or contractual and just defer payments on those, which I just don't think we can do that. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. Well, since there's no more discussion on revenue and tax, so gentlemen, your excuse. Thank you very much for coming. I know you're hungry. We're hungry too. Thank you. Can we call up the Bureau of Budget and Management, BBMR? Okay, we have a minute recess. Hello? Okay, the Committee of the House now call to order. We have here the representative of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. And let me see, to my right, of course, we have BBMR Director Carlos Bernalio. Carlos, would you like to introduce the two people with you?
Yes, sir. Morning, Senator. I have Mr. John Panglinen, Budget Supervisor, and Mr. Mike Affleckui, he's the Budget Analyst for BBMR.
Okay. Okay, who wants to start out on the Bureau of Budget, BBMR? Okay, Senator, I respect you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Carlos?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here to discuss your portion of the proposed cuts made by the Governor to BBMR. What would this cut represent to your agency?
It's about a 2.5% overall.
About $33,742?
That's right.
And what would, I'm sure you've, after you received the notice, this notice, you've gone back to your staff and figured out how this 33,000 would impact your department? Have you done those analysis?
Yes, we have, Senator. And.
And you're here to tell the legislature that you'd be able to sustain these cuts?
That's right.
Now, she's not here right now, but earlier, the Senator from Mingilau pressed Department Administration and I understand Senator Tina Munia Barnes's logic when she asked DOA, but the question is better asked to BBMR. By what methodology did you come up with to determine how some agencies, which were only up to the six month mark, how some agencies, well, here she is, have more than a, maybe, she's here, she'll probably speak after me. But I specifically wanted to talk to you. Earlier, I asked the Department Administration, based on this revenue tracking that we have for October 2005 to September 2006 actuels and October 2006, December 2006 actuels. It now shows that the total revenue collected for fiscal year 2006 was 410 million. Couple of weeks ago, the same figure was about 417, almost 418 million. And the Department Administration's response was that BBMR did not adequately book for certain variables. So the number is still at 417.
It's still 417.
Yeah, but why did you, why do we have this revenue sheet that shows that for those particular years, '05 and '06, it's, it's already actuels? I know they're subject to audits. And for the January 2007 to February 2007 is still in the draft. Why do we have this sheet showing 410? And then when we, when we question the administration, particularly the financial people, based on the numbers we have, there's always another explanation?
I believe there's the, the additional seven, seven to eight million is from the additional child tax credit. That's smoothed out, I guess, of that. Is that the tracking sheet that you're looking at?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so what they, what they do is they leave that out of, of the, the tracking sheet so that it wouldn't cause any anomalies in, in the way the collection history would be represented.
But then you say that, but then for fiscal year 2007, how you got to 434.9 million is 426 actual cash and then 3.7 for the additional child tax credit. And then the balance of the projected ACTC is a 4.2, so that's 434. I mean, you say for prior years, you don't put those amounts in. But yet for, for the projected, for the current fiscal year, those amounts are stated.
For the current fiscal year, those amounts are added back in?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's, and that should be the same process for the 410. In other words, the tracking sheet, if you notice in the tracking sheet, there's a historical collection percentages on the bottom of the.
But this is not even projections for '06, Carlos. This, it's, it's actuels.
Yeah, but, but the, the way that the, the percentages are derived is that it's based on what's collected for that particular month. So what we wanted to do, since the ACTC doesn't come, I don't think in specific periods. It could be June, it could be July, it could be, and maybe Art Illogin could answer more on that. But what we wanted to do was get a smooth tracking of what the historical collection would be net of the ATCT, Additional Child Tax Credit, so that we would get a smooth historical trending and then add it back in. So what, what should have happened there with the 410? It actually, we should have added back in what was the additional child tax credit that was received in '06.
The Governor's Revised Budget Bill calls on the Department of Revenue and Tax to collect about $30 million from a tax amnesty program. I want to ask you, as BBMR Director, is it correct to book those revenues that we're going to receive from the tax amnesty programs as revenue for '07? Or were they already booked in prior fiscal years because these taxes were already recorded? And just for accounting purposes, I mean, do we take the 434 and then add in all these additional revenue enhancements as another category? Or do we just bottom line that?
Yeah. You know, it's interesting because I had to ask, ask my staff the same question, the person that actually compiles a lot of the information. And what's interesting is that I think he said that in, in going back into the records, into the AS400 and doing some research, he found that we moved from a, from modified accrual into a cash, cash recording of, of, through the cash receipts. So it would actually be recorded as additional revenue to '07.
Well, it would be recorded as additional revenue for '07. But isn't it that those revenues were already projected in prior fiscal years? So you're double projecting, you've already projected for, because they're tax amnesty. There, there are taxes that corporations or individuals should have already paid for those prior fiscal years, but they did not. So the Department of Revenue and Taxation has a special program to waive all the penalties and fees so that they could pay on the principal. But wasn't that principal already logged, booked as prior revenue? Revenue for prior fiscal years?
If I recall, Art saying that this is going to go back, what, to 2005? And so it, it, the system changed in '99, so it would not have been recorded.
No, but it would have been projected. It would have been projected because your income taxes, your corporate taxes, though all these things are projected based on the kind of economic activity that the Administration and the Legislature projects for that year. And that's how we derived our revenue estimates. Well, I wrote a letter to the public auditor asking her this very question. I'm going to share that findings with you and as well as with the Legislature. So I just want to know, and this is part of your mandate to track the revenue coming in.
Right.
What do you believe to be the revenue tracking for the current fiscal year?
Um, we're.
Not the 453, but the baseline?
Yeah, we're, we're updating that now. We've, we're getting some information for, for March. But as of February, we were still tracking at the lower 434.
Yeah, and so the 453 is because of all the additional revenue enhancements through Rev and Tax and the adjustments downwards of the various categories, right?
The 453.
It's not a baseline 453 without those different programs that the Administration is not. Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. By the way, you know, when we require that you give us the numbers of vacancies, the allotment and cash release, so that you can pass that out to the body and the balance. Can you pass it out to the, or do you need to make, make copies of it? Okay, we'll take a one minute recess. Okay, we're, we're back to the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. Senator Luhon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, gentlemen. You know, I've, on the FY07 budget request on your decision package, Carlos here, under the activity description, it says that BBMR is responsible for review and preparation of federal programs. What role does, does BBMR play in regards to federal programs and funds?
We are actually the single point of contact with regards to all the, the applications that come in for federal grants.
You're the single point of contact?
Yes.
Okay.
Our office is designated by the Governor.
By the Governor, okay. How long have you been, have you been responsible for the reviewing of federal grants, applications? Since, since when?
Since as long as I've been at BBMR. The Budget Office has been the single point of contact for review.
Okay, so you'll bear with my line of question and then you're going to see where I'm headed to, right? Okay. Since the long, so you've been there at BBMR for how long now?
Over 20 years.
20 years, okay. So BBMR has been responsible for the review and application of federal grants and all that, right?
That's correct.
And I would assume that, that you review the applications, ensure their compliance with policies. with, uh, policies, rules and regulations and, and laws of Guam, right?
The terms and conditions.
Terms and conditions, okay. And, um, regards to that, are these, uh, employees, um, um, do they have the experience and the expertise in these areas of the federal grants that you have? Employees that, that are assigned to, to the federal grant programs, applications thereof and review, that they have the expertise in that? I, I assume they, they, they do?
That's right, they...
Okay. My point is, how does your department's functions, functions, are they relative to the federal grant applications that are supposed to come out of the, the Guam State Clearing House? Are we having duplication of services here and stuff? Because my understanding, this, the State Clearing House is the, again, the point of contact of, of grant applications and things of that nature and, and, and all that, and, uh, again, I just wanted clarification that I know in, in, in years past, and I know that BBMR has been the point of contact of federal grants and applications and review thereof and, and all that, and, and I know that you have expertise in, in, in your office for, for such a matter, but I'm confused. We have a State Clearing House that is also supposed to be responsible for, uh, applications of federal grants, and again, what you're supposed to be doing, and you've been doing for, for the longest time. That's true?
Uh, yes, I believe, um, the State Clearing House is, uh, that's something that maybe you could address to, um, Lieutenant Governors.
Okay, and I, and I will, okay, and I, and I will do that, but, but what I'm trying to get to is that you're the single point of contact for federal grants, right?
That's correct, currently.
Currently, right? And you have been?
And, and we have been, yes.
You have been, and you are currently, and you're viewing grants, you're applying for grants, you make sure they're in compliance of federal laws, Guam laws and all that, and you have expertise in your, in your, in your office that does that. And again, as far as I can remember, uh, again, you go back over 20-some years, uh, in regards to that, and you've always done it, you continue to do it, you have not given that up, right?
No.
Okay. Do you collaborate at all with the State Clearing House in regards to supposedly the same kind of functions? Do they, are they one step ahead of you and something like that? I mean, since you're the single point of contact and, and all this for federal grants, what, how is there, I mean, what collaboration, do, do you have to get a sign off from them or something from that, or do they, do they go seek this out first and then you guys apply for it? I, I don't know how this works, I mean, your offices are right down, down the hall.
At, at one time, I believe, um, uh, under, under the former Clearing House, uh, uh, they, they were concurrently reviewing applications with our office, uh, but, uh, at this point, um, right now, we are reviewing the application for the Governor's, uh, signature, we are this, you know, a staff agency of the Governor, Clearing House is a staff agency of the Lieutenant Governor's Office, so, uh, we were, um, at one, one time doing concurrent review of, um, applications.
Okay, so, again, I want to go back, that you've done it for the longest time, you continue to do it, you're the single point, you have the expertise in your office, you've always done it, and you will continue to do it, and your signatures are required for, for those applications and review thereof of, of that, right?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. I think I found an area that we can cut, uh, Mr., Mr. Chairman. I mean, I'll wait till we get to the Lieutenant Governor's budget and look at the State Clearing House, because as a single point of, uh, of applications and review thereof of federal grants, uh, it sounds like the State Clearing House is, is, is a repetitive and really not the point of contact for, for federal, uh, federal grants, applications and, and all that, and as far as back as I can remember, and the, the, uh, the head of BBMR has just solidified that this afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Tina Munia Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Carlos John, thank you guys for coming here this afternoon, I know it's been a really long day. Carlos, um, when I was, um, speaking earlier to the Director of Administration, I was referring back and reflecting back to a presentation that was done based on the AS400, and, and me just trying to find out what kind of methodology was being utilized, because I did a breakdown with, with Mrs. Perez, Ms. Perez, in reference to some agencies, um, getting released on their appropriations more than 50%, and we weren't even at the halfway mark, and then I also noted that the halfway mark was just this past, I mean, we're only at Thursday, and it was just like Saturday, Sunday, right? And, and, um, you know, I was, I was disappointed when I told you the last time we spoke, and it was really late in the afternoon, that, um, at that time, based on, on, on the affirmations that, that all those agencies and departments that were getting over the 50%, how are we going to survive for the next half of the fiscal year? And wanting some explanation there, but I also noted that, um, the Guam Public School System at the time had only received 39%, and we were already close to the halfway mark, and there was a commitment by you that they would, it was committed that you would pay the, um, the balance of that that was due to reach that halfway mark. Where are we at today with that? And, and, um, have they received it? GPSS?
You know, Senator, we, we're, we're kind of left out of the, um, that process, even with regards to, um, BBMR releasing, uh, allotment to, uh, to, uh, GPSS that is codified in, uh, Title 1152102, so with regards to how much, it's, uh, it's almost, uh, it's almost a past...
I think if I was in this, last week when the presentation was done, or two, two weeks ago, a week and a half, when the presentation was done, we were looking at 17 million, and, and you don't have an answer to that to date?
The 17, no, I, I would have to, I would have to verify with the Department of Administration.
I just, I'm just, I guess, um, wondering if, if now that we're going through this budget process and the methodology that's being utilized, knowing that we have a breakdown of, of, of maybe like nine departments, uh, with 50% already being released to them, and, 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 um, the other 59 agencies and departments who've already had, uh, your approval, um, from BBMR, and we just reached that halfway point, are we going to come back to the same table? Are you going to come back to the same table and ask, um, for more funding? Are we going to experience a shortfall based on the authorizations that were already given? On the agencies that have already seen, I, I'll give a good, good example, I, there is an agency, I mean, there, there, there is a department that has received the 100% allotment to date, based on, on, on the report that was presented to us, uh, the proposed bill has a cut of, 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 um, a couple hundred thousand, but their allotment was already received to date at 100%. My only concern is, is do we have to come back to the table and ask for more funding?
Could you let me know what department that is? Is it what department?
Mayor's Council.
The Mayor's Council.
And, and my, my, and I'm concerned is because if they were already allotted based on, on, on this presentation that you answered last week...
Right.
Um, I definitely don't want to cut the Mayor's Council anymore, I continue to say that they're the first-line responders, they do all, they're out there 24/7, and if you're going to cut on the proposed, if there's going to be a proposed cut here, and it's already been authorized here to give the 400, and there is a provision in the public law that says that nothing should be transferred or taken from, uh, GPSS and, and the Mayor's Council.
Right.
I'm just concerned, and maybe you can assist in the methodology here, on are some agencies being favored o- over the others, and some not, but I really don't want, I mean, just based on the presentation given, if the, if the 100% appropriation was already given...
Right.
Where, I mean, uh, do you, we have to come back to the same table?
I don't think 100% of the appropriation, and we've got a worksheet here, I think, for the, for the mayors that will reflect that, uh, they have not been, there's, there's a difference between the, you know...
Oh, I, we're, we're discussing about their budget, and so, you know...
When we get to that, I'll ask...
Yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
I will allow that.
But he asked, he, he, he asked for an example, and I gave him, and there's a lot of other agencies here, that means some other agencies and appropriate, I'm just saying, Mr. Chair, for the record, I, I just want to know what the methodology is, I just want to make sure that the government's not going to come back and ask, uh, are we going to experience a shortfall, are, are, what are we going to do? Are they going to come back for a supplemental, are they going to come back for additional funding? Just wanting to make sure, Mr. Chair.
Senator Pinglinen? Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Carlos, the, um, the staffing pattern for the department that, that was passed out shows a total expenditure requirement of 1.340233, or 223, uh, as the total salaries and benefits for the department. Is that still correct? In the staffing pattern that was just recently released?
Yes, that's...
That's correct. And so, the budget for the, for the Bureau in, uh, Bill 74 is 1315926.
That's correct.
So, um, you will then put in effect a reduction in the salaries of the employees?
We would take what, uh, whatever steps are necessary to, to live within that 2.5% reduction.
Right, and that would be a reduction in the staff of the employees?
Quite possibly, yes.
Okay. The Governor had indicated that he was going to cut his salary of his cabinet members by 20%, and his salary, and the Lieutenant Governor's salary, and the cabinet members. Has that, uh, gone into effect?
Uh, not currently, but, um, uh, I think there is some discussion on, uh, when they're going to implement that.
Okay. Now, the, um, the PowerPoint presentation that, uh, was supposed to be presented, but the hard copy was passed out, said there that the Governor has ordered a reduction of 10% to all unclassified individuals, uh, and I guess the distinction there is, there's cabinet members and there's unclassified that are not cabinet members. Right, so, is there any unclassified individuals in your department that have received a 10% salary cut?
No.
No, so the Governor, even though the presentation said the Governor has ordered, nobody has followed his orders yet? Or he never ordered?
I think there's, uh, still ongoing discussions, uh, right now with, um, uh, the Chief of Staff, and, uh, that policy call is, uh, is at that level.
Okay, so that was a mistake, basically, because it said past tense. So, the, the presentation said the Governor has ordered, it really should have read, the Governor intends to order, the Governor may order, the Governor's thinking about ordering, right?
I, I think at the time, it wa, it was, uh, it, it, it appeared that it was eminent that it was going to, going to happen, but, uh, there was some, uh, discussion again between, uh, the, the policy people up in the Governor's, uh, Office, Chief of Staff, and, uh, that discussion's still ongoing.
Okay. Carlos, just, uh, as a, as a note, I mean, does the BB, does the Bureau know, do you know what's our current cash position in the general fund?
Um, right now, I'm, I'm working with, uh, with Lou, and we, in fact, before, uh, the hearing, we, I was talking with her, and she had, uh, provided some, uh, some email to me with regards to where we're at, and, uh, we are, um, going to be formulating some type of reporting based on, uh, public...
Bill 15?
Bill 15, so we're, we're in the process of putting a, a format together to comply with, uh, the law.
Okay, but, uh, but you didn't check when, before you came here by any chance?
No, I didn't, she asked, my, uh, she, she had emailed it to me yesterday, but, uh, my email sometimes is, uh, I think it's faster to email it, I mean, send it through the...
Snail mail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can, can I just, uh, plug in on this? Don't you have the daily balance every day, together with, uh, you know, according to Senator Ben Pinglinen's question? Don't you have this cash balance every day with the AS400?
The Treasurer, the Treasurer has that.
Yeah, but you should too.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we're working on with, uh, with Lou Perez. Senator Ben, go ahead.
Okay, so, again, I just want to reiterate, I guess, that, um, the, the current cash requirement to meet everybody that's there in the department, um, will not be met, basically, you will have, you'll, you'll have to institute a salary cut, and not saying good or bad, but that's the, um, the result of the submission of this budget level at 1315 versus the staffing level at 1340. Okay, so...
Um, that's correct.
Right, because you're, you only have one vacancy, and that's an unfunded vacancy anyway.
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator, uh, Speaker Ben Pinglinen. I'm just going to call for about a two-minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, Carlos and John, I, you know, I, I recognize and I appreciate the, um, time that you've taken to, to, to come down and ask, answer some of our questions, but, um, is there... There, there, there does exist some specific, uh, differences between the function of BBMR and the function of the Guam State Clearing House, am I, am I correct?
You're absolutely correct. As a matter of fact, when the State Clearing House was first, um, uh, passed into law, the, if you check their enabling legislation, they have some very specific mandates, but just to give you some updates, Senator, the Lieutenant Governor has, um, ordered the State Clearing House staff to, um, restructure, uh, not just to do the Clearing House functions, the traditional Clearing House functions, but also to train, uh, grant writers, uh, and, uh, grant, uh, program managers, as well as to actively seek, uh, more federal funding for the island, uh, for all the agencies. So, uh, we look to the Clearing House to be a, a vehicle for increasing the amount of federal monies that come into this island. We know for a fact that there are millions of dollars in federal grant money that could help GPSS and some of the other agencies, uh, that are now in dire need of funding.
Okay, and, and so, along those lines, Carlos, with recognizing that you're going to get some, you know, you may have to live with some cuts, and, and, you know, the mandates that your office has, and, you know, one of the things that can clearly get us through this, uh, through this dilemma that we're in, financial dilemma that we're in, is actually pursuing, actively going after and grants, as well as cultivating individuals within our agencies to be able to go after these grants. Does your agency have the, the resources, the personnel to be able to, to do this?
Uh, actu- actually, um, as, uh, John had mentioned, uh, I, I, I think there's an ongoing process now that, uh, that, um, the, um, State Clearing House is pursuing to, to really, um, beef up in that respect, to go after, uh, uh, grant funding out there. They've actually in the past, um, conducted, uh, trainings in, in, uh, grant, sponsored training and grant, uh, writing, and I know that there's an effort right now to aggressively pursue, um, uh, grant funding out there, and we will be coordinating with, uh, with the State Clearing House, going after existing grant funding that's out there, uh, and maximizing, um, uh, the federal dollar, uh, we're working, uh, uh, currently with the State Clearing House to, to go after, um, 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 funding that's existing, so that we can maximize the federal dollar, and they're, they're an integral part of, uh, working with our office to go after that funding.
Senator, if I can clarify, uh, I, I think the, if you look at the functions of the two, uh, agencies, uh, really, State Clearing House's value is at the front end of this, trying to aggressively, uh, pursue the grant funding, training our grant writers and our program managers to make sure that we comply with all of the grant requirements. BBMR really, uh, I think its most critical function, and Carlos, correct me if I'm wrong, is really making sure that the grants are appropriate to the agency's function, as well as, you know, making sure that the accounts are established, that the funds are used in the proper way, and that they're released in accordance with the grant provisions. So, they're two very critical functions, but they're very distinct from each other.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other, uh, question? Well, I want to thank you, uh, you know, the BBMR people, Carlos and, um, your staff for being here. Oh, yeah, your excuse. Senator Edi Cavil? Yes, oh, would you like? Okay, uh, John, John de la Rosa, you have any, anything to say?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to clarify an issue I think that, uh, has caused some concern within the government of Guam. There has been news, uh, today that, uh, the... There has been news today that the, I'm sorry, there's been news today that the sample furlough notices have gone out to the agencies, and in fact, that the initial general notice of furloughs has been disseminated to the employees. And I just wanted the opportunity to clarify that the general notice is simply the notification that the, the furlough procedures can start, where they can identify or put together the plan for how that may happen. It is not a, an indication that furloughs are occurring, or even an indication that they're inevitable. It is just the start of the process. But the governor has made it very clear that we're not going to go down that road. It would be premature to go down that road until we see the final outcome of Bill 74. And with all the, all of the interaction on this floor, we feel comfortable that, even though we started the procedure, that we can come up with a revised budget that has minimal impact on any personnel, if any at all, in that respect. And so although the general notice has gone out, it's a procedural matter. And before, before the next, before the, before we can actually implement, we do have to send out the individual notices for those who may be affected. So the general notice has really allowed the agencies to begin to communicate with their, with their employees and to establish the plan for the bumping and all those other things. But we do not, at this point, anticipate taking any further action until we see the outcome of Bill 74.
But, but Mr. de La Rosa, if I may, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair, isn't the notice a requirement of the process? In other words, you could not furlough anybody if you didn't issue this notice, and this is the first step. It's like the scoping meetings to move the Marines here, you know? They have to have a scoping meeting by law in order to plan the EIS, in order to move the Marines when they move, that they could not move them without the scoping meeting. So this issuance of the notice is part of the requirement of the process, and that...
That's correct, but what, what, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it doesn't mean that because we, we've issued the general notice, we have to go the next step and issue the individual notices.
I understand that. But what prompted you to do this, if you're saying that you have confidence that the discussions on this floor is not going to require that? I mean, I just, it's kind of like the typhoon, you know? When we said, we're going to send everybody home at, because I'm going to declare a condition one at 2:00, everybody went home at 2:00, or I'm going to declare a condition one at 4, at 4:00, everybody went home at 2:00, and then no condition one declaration, yet everybody's gone. So it's, it's that kind of thing of like, you know, I understand the anticipation, I understand the need to plan, and I understand the need to inform the employees, and all of that could have been done informally and without the issuance of the notice. So that's, that's just my point here, is that this formalizes, the furlough process is in play.
You're correct, but it does not mean we have to go down the road.
I understand that, I understand that, but if you don't have that intention, and all you wanted to do was educate, then you didn't need to...
Well, Senator, I...
Start walking, take that first step. I mean, that's just the...
It, it is a due diligence issue for us, that there are timelines that need to be met. So in the event that that has to happen, the further into the year it went...
The less effective it will have.
And the larger the impact it will have.
Yes, I understand that.
So it is just a due diligence issue. I guess what...
I guess there really is, there, there's not that much confidence because the discussions in here.
There's more confidence than the predicting of a typhoon.
You know, but again, it's, if, if it was that process, if it was to ensure that everybody knows what the process is and what they may be able to face, then all of that could have been done on an informal basis. This formalizes the process, and, and you've taken the first step. It doesn't mean that you're going to get to a furlough, it just means you've taken the first, first step formally, as prescribed by, by statutes in terms of the process.
That's correct. However, as I said, the governor has also instructed his agencies not to take any further action until we review the outcome of Bill 74.
Thank you all. Okay, the committee of the whole. We have the Civil Service Commission, Bureau of Statistics and Plans, Department of Military Affairs, Department of Public Works. We start them on Monday at 10:00. Okay, this committee of the whole recesses until Monday at 10:00.